Today is Tuesday, July 9th. Again, it's nine o'clock. Our invocation today will be read by, led by Ricky Bybee with Trinity Baptist Church and Hope FM and the Pledge of Allegiance by Terry Turner, Commissioner Turner. Please rise if you're able to do so.
I'd like to start with sharing a scripture I read this morning from the book of First Timothy, chapter two, verse one. It says, "Therefore I exert first, first of all, that supplications, prayers, and intercessions, and giving of thanks be made for all men, for kings and all who are in authority, that we may lead quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and reverence." Will you pray with me? Our most gracious and heavenly fathers, I do come to you this morning. Father, I do give thanks that we live in a country that is free and able to govern ourselves and we're able to worship and pray in public gatherings. Father, I thank you for that. It's today that we pray over this gathering of folks that are in authority. Father, I ask that you allow them to be led by the Spirit and that, Father, they do so in peaceably, peaceful ways and we convey our thoughts clearly and in love and for all folks. And I ask for a lot of special blessing upon the families of those that are in authority today, the commissioners, and that they go home and they enjoy a peaceful life and that we go home and knowing that you're in control above all and through it all, for it's in your holy and precious name and I pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ricky. I appreciate that. The voice of Hope FM, ninety-one point three on your radio dial. And Commissioner Turner, thank you very much for the pledge. Next order of business will be our approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve minutes as on the agenda.
Second. Proper motion to approve both sets of minutes on the agenda, proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. We are going to recess our Board of County Commission meeting, go right into call to order our Port Authority, and the next item is our regular minute meetings for that, for the Port Authority.
Mr. Chairman, I approve the minutes for the Port Authority regular meeting from June eleventh, twenty twenty-four.
Proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Next on our agenda is our lease of the warehouse. Mr. Sullivan, do you have that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
As you should have seen in your packet, we have received two offers to lease the second warehouse that is currently vacant at Port property at one ten Port, Putt, Port Road in Placa, Florida. There was two offers, one from Victoria Marine. I believe they are present in the room and also from NIS. I do not see them in the room. Oh, sorry. They are present. My apologies. Both have made offers and I brought them both to you all for consideration and we staff will follow the guidance of the Board, well, the Authority, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Turner has a question for you.
Sir. Not a question, just a comment. I think that this is a very important step that we need to think about. This gives us the opportunity to bring in new economic development or aid in somebody that's already been a valuable member of our community for many years and has always tried to do the right thing. This Commissioner would like to see the lease go to Victoria Marine because they've already are leasing our back warehouse from us. The only thing that I would like to request is after his two-year initial term that he's offered on his renewals, that we get a five percent increase per optional year renewal after the first two years lease. So if he would agree to that, then I'm good. I want to give it to Victoria Marine.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Adams, that?
Yeah, so I'm along the lines of what Commissioner Turner is saying as well. And what I did, I asked him to reach out to the other company. What's the, and?
NIS is the abbreviated name for the company.
And I asked, because we do have, and because they were looking to remodel that building to their needs, we do have another building on the other property and to see if they might be interested in that. And then we serve the purpose of the existing economic development and the new economic development potentially. My understanding is there is some interest in that building from them as well. I don't know if it's the same interest level or anything, but I would be for the current user, like you're saying, and allowing the other user to potentially look at the building that needs considering more work than this building. But if we could lease them both and that serves both purposes, that would be fantastic.
Well, I just don't feel, Mr., if I may. I just don't feel like the other building would be conducive to Victoria Marine's use because it's right beside the one they're already leasing.
Yeah, this is the other, the other company, NIS, yeah.
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the lease from Victoria Marine with the caveat that on the, after the two-year initial period, that it's a five percent increase for the three optional years.
Proper motion on the floor.
Second.
Proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our thing is public comment on Port Authority item. Mr. Kennedy, you have a public comment on Port Authority item? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Patrick Kennedy, six seventy-three Third Avenue, Willac. I'm here on behalf of the other party. And I just wanted to let you know that there is interest in the other parcel. And one of my client's primary concerns was, was the, I want to call them keep marine, were they ready to go? Because my client's interested in seeing the port develop as well and, you know, obviously are ready to go. And so my client was actually willing to withdraw subject to that understanding with Victoria. So appreciate your decision, appreciate your consideration of wanting a going concern to keep going. And our client is going to present something to you on the other property very shortly.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comment. Okay. Is there any other public comment on the, on Port Authority item? Okay. Is there any other general discussion amongst the Board? Hearing none. Sam, are we ready to close down the port? Sam, any more business on the port? Thank you. We're going to close the Port Authority meeting, reconvene the Board of County Commission meeting, and go right into Heather Poe with the four H.
Bobby is going to take that today.
Bobby is going to be here today, okay? Bobby, come on up. And we're going to fly drones in the building? Is that what I'm understanding today?
I'm not sure what Liam has planned. I'm just here to introduce Liam to you. So we put on a drone camp with the generous donation from Putnam Soil and Water Conservation that helped sponsor a huge chunk of what it costs for the kids to be able to be trained and to take their tests to be officially licensed to become drone pilots. And today Liam's going to do a short presentation for you on what he got from the camp and he is officially licensed now. So here's Liam.
Hello, Liam.
Hi, I'm Liam Saylor. I attend the Crescent City Junior Senior High School and I'm going into the twelfth grade and I'm a graduate of the four H drone camp. And I would like to thank the people who gave me this opportunity, Charles McGuire, who is the aerospace teacher at Crescent City High School, as well as the people like at four H for, you know, putting on this program. And I would also additionally like to thank Ms. Wendy and Ms. Bobby for driving me and everyone else who took the program to Embry-Riddle to take the tests. I would also like to thank the Putnam County Soil and Water Conservation District for sponsoring the program. And I wasn't sure what to expect when I was taking the program, but the program was rather hands-on and interactive, both, both with actual activities we did as well as the lectures given in the class were also interactive. We did many activities, but one of the ones that we did near the end of the program was to test aerodynamics of a plane and how the load factor affected the plane, like changing the center of gravity forward or backward and how that affected the plane. One of the other activities we did was flying the drones and this was facilitated by Lance Dollar, who is a previous graduate of the program and someone, and a local business owner who does aerial photography for real estate. He's only a few years older than myself and he has shown me some job opportunities I might have in the future. And specifically aerial photography is something that I found that might be something that I would be interested in looking forward to, like doing with my Part 107 license, as it can help from, you know, real estate to farming to even like, you know, disaster relief, like when hurricanes hit. And I've learned a lot of skills throughout the program, such as like reading a meteorological aerodrome report or METAR, which is a, which is equivalent to like a language that airports use to give weather reports, as well as reading sectionals and also crash course in aerodynamics, which are also very useful for when operating a drone. And also a few day-to-day skills, such as the stability and instability of the, like, you know, weather around us. Today, I'd say the weather's, you know, rather stable. And I also had a drone before the program and now I can actually use the drone and I actually have it registered. It's a Ryuk F-11 Pro and now I can use this drone for commercial use, such as like what Lance Dollar is doing, which is aerial photography for real estate. And I would also like to once more thank the people who gave me this opportunity. And I hope this program can help more people in the future get more opportunities like this and just enjoy the program like I did. And I would like to thank all of you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Have a nice day.
Hey, Bobby. Why don't you all come up and get a picture taken? We'll get a picture.
All right.
Who would have ever thought years ago those things we flew around the house and crashed into things would be beneficial in the ag business? But they are. They're beneficial in lots of businesses today, so we appreciate it. Mr. Reynolds, the Honorable Matt Reynolds, you have the podium, sir. You have some recognition?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman. First, I would like to call up our latest employee of the quarter, Mrs. Katie Miller. And while she's on the way up, if we would, give her a round of applause, please. Katie, and if I could just take a brief moment to explain, Katie, again, these employee of the quarters and employee of the year are determined based upon their peers and what their peers submit each quarter on who they're recommending for employee of the quarter. And Katie got more than, than one recommendation and the recurring theme was she just, she goes above and beyond for her peers and her unwavering dedication and support to the office are just phenomenal. So again, thank you, Katie. Don't run off yet. We have to, we have to take a photo.
You want to get your picture? Bring your family up, too. Do you want us to stay up here? No, you want to gather them? Wait a minute. Wait, wait, wait.
We're fixing to be.
Where's Alice coming to meet?
Three, two, one.
Good deal. Katie, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Next up, we have somebody that is celebrating five years of service with the office, and I think this is somebody that probably all of you will be familiar with, and I will go ahead and have her come up, Mrs. Ryan Marabito. As, as you all are well aware, Ryan is truly dedicated to this county and especially to clerk's office. So thank you, Ryan, for your five years of dedicated service.
I won't make Ryan say. It's a moment of many words.
I'm sure. Come here, wait, wait. Wait, we got here. Man, you're making this call. You got to block me out. Sorry.
Are you still good? Are you the chairman? Three, two, one.
And last, but certainly not least, and I don't, I don't know if she made it this morning, is Ms. Teresa here? Kowalski? I don't see her. Did she make it? Okay, she didn't, Ryan. But just momentarily, I'd like to thank also for her five years of service to the, to the clerk's office. So thank you, Ms. Teresa.
Would you like to bring all your staff up to get a picture?
If they would like.
Yeah.
Everybody want to come up and take a group photo?
There's some in the back, back there, too. Come on. Come on. You can do it.
Joel, trying to get you in there, sir. All right. Three, two, one.
Now, get back to work. Thank you, Honorable Matt Reynolds. And next is Lori Parker. Good morning, Lori.
Put this down, Matt was up. We're presenting the recognition for the employee of the month, and that is Marie Chase from Public Works. If she can come on up.
Hey, Marie.
Marie is the right-of-way agent for Public Works and JT's going to say a few things.
So everybody that I'm looking at now has had conversations with Marie Chase at some point or another. I discovered very quickly that she is a wealth of knowledge that I speak to almost on a daily basis, multiple times, to know what's, what's right-of-way, what's going on with easements, drainage easements, ingress, egress, you name it, she'll find it. And when you ask a question, she jumps on immediately and has much information that will benefit everybody. And so I just want to say I really appreciate everything you do for us and the speed at which you do it and your accuracy is greatly appreciated. So thank you.
I just want to quickly say that I'm really proud of our Public Works team. We have some really great people in Public Works and I'm really proud to be a part of the team. I've really enjoyed it.
Good. All right, come on down. You want to bring some of your people? And Ms. Parker, congratulations on your big fish you caught in the river. Nice red fish. If you saw that picture, that thing was huge. We're going to take a two-minute break before we go into our planning development. We're going to take a two-minute break before we go into our planning and development. Going to go rezoning WCR 2015 LLC. Jennifer, you got that?
Good morning. For the record, Jennifer Gassell. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from residential 2R2 and commercial neighborhood C1 to commercial neighborhood C1 to allow for a multi-unit retail or office based building. The applicant is WCR 2015 LLC. Agents are Jane White, Bridget Costello, and Elizabeth Riley. So 1.78 acre parcel located at 661 and 657 South Highway 17 in San Mateo. The purpose of the requested zoning map amendment is to rezone 1.78 acres from residential 2R2 and commercial neighborhood C1 to commercial neighborhood C1 to allow for a multi-unit retail or office-based building. The parcel is designated urban service on the adopted future land use map. The surrounding areas are mostly residential 2R2 and agriculture. The two subject parcels contain approximately 230 feet of road frontage along South Highway 17 and approximately 270 feet of road frontage along Troup Road. The parcel does not appear to contain wetlands and is located within FEMA flood zone X, which is not a special flood hazard area. Should this rezon be approved, the applicant will then submit to Development Review Committee, DRC, to satisfy additional development requirements. The DRC will review plans to ensure the development is compliant with local, state, and federal development regulations. Agencies including but not limited to Florida Department of Health, Putnam County Public Works, Emergency Services, St. John's River Water Management District will review plans to ensure the development will not adversely affect surrounding properties. Our aerial view. Future land use. Zoning. Flood zone. And wetlands. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from residential 2R2 and commercial neighborhood C1 to commercial neighborhood C1. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan and meets the locational requirements of the commercial neighborhood C1 zoning district provided in the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. At the scheduled public hearing on May 8, 2024, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the rezoning application. Questions?
Commissioners, any questions for staff? All right, then we'll close that part. Is the applicant here and wishes to speak? Okay, please come up and state your name.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for hearing me. I'm Jane White, one of the owners of the property.
If you could put that microphone right to you and your address.
Okay, Jane White, and it is 661 557, or 557, excuse me, County Road 17. And we're interested in redeveloping it to rezoning it so that we can put a retail center in there. And if it were to be approved today, it would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak in favor of this application? I do have a couple cards. I don't know if they're against or in favor, but we'll go Ms. Janice Wall. You are given three minutes to talk. There will be a timer, and we will ask you to wrap it up if you go past that time. But please come up and state your name and address for the record and...
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Janice Wall, and I live at 113 Divvy Divvy Drive, San Mateo, Florida, 32187. I have lived at this property for 32 years. And I am here because I have some concerns about the rezoning of this property. I'm concerned that in the future, if the rezoning takes place, that it could decrease the property value of my residential property. And I'm concerned that once it's rezoned to commercial, then it can be sold again and another buyer can come in and put other commercial properties on there, which could change the face of my neighborhood considerably. I'm concerned about the quality of life that I will have with additional noise and traffic in the area. Also, there is a natural ditch, and I didn't even know it was there until we had the first hurricane several years ago, and had a lot of rain. And there's a natural ditch that flows between my property and the property next to it, which is one of the properties. And I'm really concerned that...I did hear that it's not a part of the wetlands, but it's very low property. When we built our house, we had to have lots of fill dirt put in to raise it up, and then we had to have a new drain fill several years ago, and that also had to be built up. So we now have a pump station. So our property is built up now, and I'm concerned that if there's another property that goes in that develops this, that it could cause our property to flood when there's like major rainstorms and things. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience wishing to speak for or against? And we'll close the public part of that. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of zoning case REZ 24-000002.
Second for discussion, I just have one question.
We have a proper motion, proper second for the discussion. Mr. Adams, you have the floor.
This is...this came before us before, didn't it?
Right.
And this eliminated the one lot, though, that was right next, I think, her property. So given that, I think that it's adjacent to existing commercial properties, from what I remember, that they own as well, and that it gives them that buffer, that one lot that we never...I don't think we felt would make sense. So I'm for this. I just wanted to make sure that we were eliminating that one lot that was to the right.
And that was actually my concern when it came before, was that they had the lot right next to Divvy Divvy Road in the application. They dropped that portion of it, so now it's just the two lots over by, I believe it's Troup Road.
Right.
The two that's further over, so it does give them insulation from the...and they withdrew, or they wouldn't have been able to bring it back within a year. So they withdrew and redid their application.
I just wanted to make sure I was remembering correctly.
Mr. Pickens, you have the floor.
No, I just want to add to that is that I remember the case also, and that was our concern, is that lot that was abutting Divvy Divvy Road, right? And that's not in this. And there's also, I think they were going for a little more intensive zoning to a C3. And so this is C1, which is definitely less intensive. So I'm in favor of this.
All right, any further comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say in five, a saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Next is a rezon of REZ 24-00003, Putnam County District School Board.
Jennifer Gassell, Planning and Development Services. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment from agriculture to public use light P1 to allow for a new public school. The applicant is Putnam County District School Board. The agent is Clay Swager of EDA Consultants. Parcel is 18.11 acre, located at 156 Horseman Club Road in Palaca. We will not be voting on this today. It has to go for another hearing. The purpose of the requested zoning map amendment is to rezone 18.11 acres from agriculture to public use light P1 to allow for a new public school. The parcel is designated public facilities on the adopted future land use map. The subject parcel is vacant and has approximately 600 feet of road frontage on Horseman Club Road. The parcel does appear to contain approximately 60,000 square feet of wetlands and is located in FEMA flood zone X, which is not a special floods hazard area. The current zoning of agriculture does allow educational uses by way of a special use permit. However, the existing future land use and the existing zoning are inconsistent. The public facilities' future land use designation is meant for community facilities and services. According to the table 2.01A of the Land Development Code, the public facilities' future land use designation is only compatible with public light P1, public heavy P2, and planned unit development PUD. The previous school citing would have been classified as a type 1 non-conforming use as defined by LDC Section 45-813. Non-conforming uses have provisions in place which allow for maintenance repairs and insignificant renovations to occur. However, any significant renovation, expansion, or redevelopment require the site to be consistent in regards to zoning and the designated future land use category. The only method of compliance for a new school to be built is to request an amendment to the zoning map to make the property consistent with the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. Construction of public schools by Putnam County School District are exempt from obtaining building permits from Putnam County. In addition, the Putnam County School Board is exempt from submitting development plans to the Development Review Committee. School building plans and site development plans are preempted to the Florida Department of Education and NEFA for approval by certified reviewers specializing in the development of public school buildings. It's our aerial view. Future land use. Zoning. Flood zone. Wetlands. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from agriculture to public use light P1 as the proposed amendment is consistent with the adopted goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and is compatible with existing development in the area. At the scheduled public hearing on May 8, 2024, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the rezoning application. Questions?
I don't have a question. I do want to make a comment that what we found out a few months back is any properties over 10 acres, we have to come back for another hearing based on the state legislators. So that's why we're not going to be doing anything today with this, other than setting a future date and time certain to hear this case. Mr. Turner, you got a question?
That was my question. I thought it was only for PUDs, so it's any zoning at all, Rich? The 10 acre, I thought it was only for changes in PUDs. So any zoning over 10 acres? I got you. Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak in this matter or wait until the next hearing?
Or both.
Or both, yes. Exactly.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm Clay Swager. I'm a certified land planner. I work with EDA Consultants here in North Florida, working here this morning on behalf of the Putnam County School District. I'd like to give you a brief presentation. We've got representatives from the school district and the architecture and engineering team that's related to the school project, and just like to give you some information to answer any questions that you might have. Appreciate the chance to do that. So as you all are very aware, this property is located on Horseman Club Road off of...well, between Quill and State Road 19. This property is approximately 18 acres in size, located at 156 Horseman Club Road. It was the home to E.H. Miller Elementary School for many years, serving the local community. It was closed between the years of 2020 and 2021. And as part of the Putnam County...excuse me, Putnam County School District's 30-year revitalization plan, the district leaders identified action was needed because of the aging buildings and the conditions of the site to revitalize the site, bring a new school building online, and to better serve the public and the citizens of the county in this area. As your planning staff indicated, the property is zoned agriculture currently and has a future land use designation of public facilities. And county's planning staff has indicated that the property...the property does have the proper comprehensive plan land use designation of public facilities to support the school, which has been there for many, many decades. However, the property should be rezoned to P1, public facilities light, to match the public facilities land use designation in the comprehensive plan. So that's why we're here today. We're respectfully requesting a rezoning of the property from agriculture to P1 to make the zoning consistent with the land use designation on the property and to facilitate the school project that's moving forward. This is your comprehensive plan future land use map for the area. You can see the property outlined in red, in pink color, which is public facilities, which again does allow schools as a permitted use. Your current zoning map is shown here, denoting agriculture zoning designation, and then the proposed map is P1, the public facilities light designation. This is an excerpt from your Land Development Regulations for Public Use Light. I think it's important to differentiate between P1 and P2. P1 only allows light, light uses, light public uses, parks, recreation, schools, and so forth, not some of the more heavy type of uses that you might find that are public facilities. So it is intended to be associated with residential areas and to be compatible with those areas. Again, the zoning right now is agriculture, and it's not consistent with your comprehensive plan. We would request the rezoning to P1 to match the designations. Your planning staff also referenced this table, and I apologize how small it is, but it essentially shows which zoning designations match with your comprehensive plan land use designations. And so public facilities land use is the column on the left side, and it indicates only P1, P2, and PUD are the zoning districts that are permitted or that are supported in your comprehensive plan. So that's why we're requesting the less intense option that would allow the school facility. So there are several requirements in your Land Development Regulations. Certainly won't go through all of those unless there are specific questions, but the application has been filed in a timely manner. We had a pre-application meeting with your staff to discuss exactly what are the requirements for the rezoning application, and that all advertisement was done in a sufficient manner to bring this application forward to you in a complete way. There are several items that are required, including legal descriptions, information about the property owner, the description of the request, maps, and the intended use of the property, which of course we do know is a school site. So all of that information has been provided to you and your professional staff. This application, the rezoning request, is consistent with your comprehensive plan. As I mentioned, public facilities land use map designation is on the property currently. There are several categories or types under public facilities for community facilities and service types. A school is under type 1 underneath public facilities land use. And so the use of this property as a school is consistent with your comprehensive plan and the designation that's been on the property for a good amount of time, and that that proposed P1 zoning will be compatible and will implement your comprehensive plan. There's been a lot of work on this property and this project to bring it forward. From the school district themselves, obviously, project funding has come forward. It is consistent with their long-range plan that has been part of a public process. They've also taken the opportunity to reach out to the public and neighbors in the surrounding areas to discuss the school project, answer questions, and communicate, even as recent as between the Planning Commission meeting about a month and a half ago and today. So they're making the effort to make sure everyone's aware of the project and answer questions. The Northeast Florida Educational Consortium, the NEFEC, is the agency that provides a review for building permits and issues those approvals for the school board. So while the county building department doesn't issue those building permits, they do get those permits from that agency, with a very rigorous review process. Putnam County has issued fire marshal approval for life safety for the project. Public Works for your county here has issued a right-of-way use permit, which includes road improvements to Horseman Club Road, including turn lanes, and I have an exhibit I'll show you in just a moment. The St. John's River Water Management District, there are some wetland areas on the property that have been delineated and fully protected, so will not be any environmental impacts, and also a stormwater system to provide proper treatment of runoff this generated from the school property has been approved by the Water Management District and their ERP. And the city of Palaca and FDEP have approved upgrades and updates to the utility system, including connections to water and sewer and so forth. So there's been a lot of work in the background. This piece on the rezoning is one of several items that have been moving forward. So I wanted to give you an overview of where we were. Also, there were some questions about traffic and transportation through this process, and so again, we don't have the site plan here for you today for approval per se, but I did want to give you in the public an update. This plan essentially is the site plan overlaid on top of an aerial photo, and there was a professional traffic study prepared for this project that was reviewed and approved by your Public Works staff, indicating that southbound and northbound turn lanes with a pretty significant distance on each are required in order to adequately allow ingress and egress, safe ingress and egress out of the property. Also, the bus route has been identified that will come through Davis Lake Road on the south and then ultimately through a portion of Brandy Lane on the east side of the property. And that road, that section of Brandy Lane will be paved. That's actually on school district property, so they'll be improving that road, and bus traffic will come through that area. The area outlined in brown shows the bus route that will come in from the rear and the east side. There's plenty of room for stacking and parking of buses on site to make sure there's no backup on any public roads. Also, in yellow, back to the west side, this is for parents dropping off and picking up. There's at least 80 stacking spaces on the property, so there's plenty of room for cars to come in as you're dropping off and picking up your kids to make sure that there's no issues with safety on the road out on Horseman Club Road. And there's also almost 240 parking spaces. There's been a lot of work on behalf of the school district to make sure they bring a plan forward that will adequately serve the property and do it in a safe manner as far as transportation is concerned. And so we would respectfully request, and I understand you do not vote on this today, but ultimately, the rezoning from agriculture to public light, and your planning staff has made a professional opinion that this is consistent with the comprehensive plan. It's their recommendation to go to P1, and we would respectfully ask your approval. Also, we did receive recommendation of approval from the Planning Commission on this item. So thank you for the opportunity to present this information to you, and we're here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for applicants? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you very much.
If anybody in the audience would like to speak in favor or against this, and seeing no one rushing to the microphone, do want to recognize School Superintendent Dr. Rick Cericy for being here today. Thank you, elected official, and also elected official School Board member David Buckles for being here. Thank you very much. And Assistant Superintendent Thomas Bowlin, thank you for being here. Yes, sir, Mr. Turner.
I move that we move this forward to the July 23 meeting at 9:00 a.m., or soon thereafter as possible to be for final decision.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Proper second. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say in five, a saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign?
Aye.
Okay, three to one.
Just to clarify, it has nothing to do with this application. It has to do with the fact that we...
Yeah, I don't think your microphone was on.
Has nothing to do with the application. I vote no on every one of these, because I believe these meetings should be held in the evening.
Thank you. All right, moving right along, we're going to go to the next item, our Land Development Code revisions. Mr. Baker, you have that?
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. Today is the day. Today is the final hearing. Hopefully, we get an adoption of the revised Land Development Code.
Move approval.
Proper motion, do we have a second?
I've heard this 19 times, move approval.
We got a proper motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Got a proper second? Any further discussion on the revisions?
I think I actually have to...pardon me? Okay, excuse me. I can't move approval yet. I've been scolded.
I don't know about you, but I feel I have been scolded. Okay, do we have any public comment on the Land Development Code revision? Either for, going once, going twice, gone. Mr. Turner, your motion?
Yeah, I move approval.
A second.
I think I need to actually find the ordinance and read the...
Just by title?
Yeah.
On page 127.
127, okay. I got it right. Mr. Chairman, I move approval of an ordinance of Putnam County, Florida, amending Chapter 45 Articles 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 of the Putnam County Land Development Code and the adopting Article 13 of the Putnam County Land Development Code by amending and revising existing regulations of the Putnam County Land Development Code, establishing new regulations and procedures relating to Land Development Code enforcement, repealing ordinance 1988-01, and any amendment thereto, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Mr. Pickens, any further discussion on the motion at hand? Mr. Adams, that?
Yeah, I'm fine with every change you made except for making the new committee, so I cannot vote yes on this. cannot vote yes on this.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, like sign?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you. Next item, Public Works, public hearing, request to vacate.
Hey, Zach, did you actually write that last resolution that had a two-page heading on it?
Just for the benefit.
I don't know which one.
Mr. Spofford, thank you for being here.
You ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Good morning.
I was waiting on Zach, I'm sorry.
Okay. We got Public Works received a request to vacate undeveloped right-of-way on the McCurry subdivision, which is just east of the hospital tucked in behind, I think it's the Forest Glen Apartments. We ran through our staff, nobody had any objections to the vacation, so it's just moved forward to you guys. I think you've seen it one time before.
Any questions for Public Works or staff? All right, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Do you have to ask for a public input?
Yeah, it's a public hearing. Do we have anybody who wants to speak in favor? Anybody who wants to speak against? And going once, going twice, gone. Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to approve a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Putnam County, Florida, vacating undeveloped rights right-of-way in the McCurry subdivision in Palaca in accordance with Section 336.09 Florida Statute, closing and abandonment of roads authority in Section 336.12 Florida Statute, closing of abandonment of roads, termination of easement, and conveyance of fee.
Second.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second? Is that right, Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion on the motion at hand? Hearing now all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Now, we're going to go to our public comment on agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board on agenda items. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, so is there anybody in the audience who want to speak on agenda items only right now? And seeing none, we'll close the public portion of agenda items. Commissioner Adams, Zach, any items you'd like to pull?
No, sir.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes, sir, I'd like to pull item aye.
Mr. Pickens?
I have none.
And I have none. The Chair will entertain a motion on the remaining items.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of items A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, and J.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a proper second? Any further discussion on the consent agenda items? Hearing now all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Mr. Turner, you have item aye.
Yes, sir. The only thing that I wanted to bring to the attention is that on the agenda item itself, it says renewal term commencing October 1, 2026 for five years. That's a typo. That should be 2025 for five years. And then, just, I think in the contract it states it correctly. I just didn't, I just wanted it brought to the attention that there was a typo on the agenda item, and that for our first year, which would be starting on October 1, 2025, there will not be a CPI increase in that amount. It would only be on the end of the first renewal year, so at the start of the second year, that would be when the not to, a maximum increase of the CPI or 4%, whichever. And with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I move this agenda item.
Do we have a proper motion? Do we have a second? Do we have a proper second? Any further discussion? Hearing now all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Turner, for pointing that out. Next item is our codes enforcement. Chris, you're not Thomas. Is there anybody in the audience that has a code case listed here? Okay, and but two people. What number are you, sir?
I'm not sure. He's number one.
Number one?
Yes.
Okay, hang on. And you, sir, are, what number are you?
2001.
Could you try to determine with him, Chris?
Chris, can you run over there real quick and point out which number he is?
We'll hear them, I'm assuming we're going to hear them first, Mr. Chairman, where they don't have.
Or we can get it together on time. Yeah.
He is number two.
Number two?
Okay.
So they're in order right now? All right, go right ahead, sir.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Chris Capola, filling in for Tom Moore. Code case is 2007-34, address 118 Bryan Road, Interlock in Florida. Property owner's name is William Mercer. The violations were permits required for mobile home and demo. Original fine amount was $152,862. The tax surplus received was $1,079.45. Total cost of enforcement action was $1,684. The property owner has recently purchased the property. The property is now compliant, and the owner is requesting a fine reduction. We are requesting approval for the fine reduction, and requesting approval for the use, the tax surplus received for $1,079.45, which would bring the total still due to $604.55. If the board approves, we recommend reduce fine to be paid in 90 days.
The applicant here would like to speak on that. Please come forward and state your name.
My name is William Mercer Morris III. I live at 7836 Laura Street North, Jacksonville, Florida. I purchased this property at a tax deed sale approximately one month ago. I was not aware of the code violations on the property. It was a common name on the civil search. I received a letter shortly thereafter. Immediately, I contacted code enforcement, worked with the office to determine how I need to rectify the situation. I went out to the property, cleared the property, cleared another property that was not adjacent to this property to give benefit to code enforcement, took before and after pictures, sent it to code enforcement. I have since not only cleaned a homeless encampment that was sitting on the property. The mobile home was prior demolished by the prior owner, but the homeless were sitting on this property. There was a little bit of a crime wave in the neighborhood because of this. I've wiped the property clean, cleared up the vegetation growth, and has since got a contract on the property for sale of the property, and they're going to be fencing the property to reduce further compliance issues. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we reduce the cost to 1684, of which the tax surplus of $1,079.45 be used towards that for a remaining balance of $604.55 if it's paid within 60 days.
Second.
And that's 60 days, right? Okay, good. And we have proper motion, proper second, and further discussion? Hearing now all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Thank you, sir. Next one, Chris?
Okay, code case is 2011-651. Address is 128 Southwest 59th Avenue, Interlockin. Property owner's name is Michael Breeding. The violation was unsafe mobile home. The original fine amount was $7,797. Tax surplus received was $2,189.57. Total cost of enforcement action was $5,5498. The property owner has recently purchased the property. The property is now compliant, and the owner is requesting a fine reduction. We are requesting approval for the fine reduction, requesting approval for the use, the tax surplus received for $2,189.57, which would bring the total still due to $3,308.43. If the board approves, we recommend reduce fines be paid within 90 days.
Thank you. The applicants here would like to speak. Please come up.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me today. Thank you for inviting me to speak. I did recently purchase this property at a tax deed sale.
I need your name and address, I'm sorry.
Apologize. Michael Breeding, 1774 Treeland Avenue, Middleburg, Florida. Recently, over the course of the last two years, I've purchased about a dozen tax delinquent properties in the county. It's my intention to purchase these tax delinquent properties. Obviously, some are not compliant, and my goal is to bring those into compliance with the code enforcement, as well as benefit the community with the renovation of these I guess my request to you would be to further reduce the fine in the sense that, you know, the property has a specific value. And with, okay, so I see somewhat of an issue with the process of code enforcement because the penalties and fines are used as a tool, a tool to bring non-compliant properties into compliance. But once you reach a certain point with these fines and penalties, the property owners do not come into compliance, or perhaps they pass away or lose the property to a tax deed. These fines and penalties make it almost impossible to bring these properties back from blight, from a blight condition. Investors don't want to touch them. Property owners don't want to touch them because you're not really sure how bad the damage is, how bad the code enforcement fines are. This particular property had a recorded lien, sorry, I'm a little nervous. This particular property had a recorded lien of $3,960. I did anticipate, you know, I've been doing this for a little while, I did anticipate there were going to be additional fines, penalties, and fees. I did not expect that it would be double of the recorded fee or fine, which was an abatement. It was $39.60 for the abatement. I'd ask that you'd further reduce the penalty, whatever you feel is appropriate, and I appreciate your time.
First of all, let me say, I don't speak for the entire board. I only speak for me, and I want to say thank you for looking at these properties and buying them and putting them back in compliance.
Yes, sir.
Let me assure you, the case before you had a fine of $152,000.
Yes, yes, sir.
We understand that.
Yes.
But if we lower that any further, they're not going to come in compliance, no matter what.
Right.
So this is a way that we can get them in compliance, or get them out.
Agreed.
And then, somebody who wants to buy the property can buy it, sell it, whatever they can.
Yes.
In this case, the gentleman's already got a buyer for the property. That's a good thing. So there are some people in the community that have approached me that don't want us to reduce the fines down.
Right.
That's not practical, so let me assure you. So what we're trying to do here today is just get the hard cost of the taxpayer money back. This is money that the codes enforcement put out. This is money the taxpayers of Putnam County put in to this property.
Right.
And the reason it's so much is you got your abatement. You know that. So that's why that one's a little bit higher than the most of them.
Right.
Most of them, we try not to abate. We have been trying to put those out for surplus and let people clean them up or abate them themselves, but in this case, we abated this one.
Right.
So that's the case. So, but we'll see what the board wants to do from here out. Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
May I add one more thing additionally? I apologize. So I can put a number or figure on it? May I ask that the board would consider to reduce the cost to the $39.60 that was the recorded lien on the property, the cost of abatement?
But again, that's taxpayer money that's spent to clean that property up. How do I tell the taxpayers, you paid for something and you're not going to get it back?
I would like to repay the taxpayers. I just like it, I would just like the fines and penalties that were assessed to the previous owner reduced from that total.
That's the pleasure of this board, so we'll see what they want to do.
I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Well, somebody recently told me, when you're asking for something, you may as well swing for the fences, because there's only one way of knowing that you're not going to get it.
Yes, sir.
And that's to ask for it. But that would set a precedence that I'm unwilling to set. We've been doing it for a lot of years, and we haven't varied much from it at all. So anyhow, Mr. Chairman, I move that we assess a fine of $5,498 for a reduction, and that the, that of that, $2,189.57 becomes out of the tax surplus received for a balance of $3,308.43 if it's paid within 90 days.
A proper motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I'll second.
Proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Pickens, your lights on?
None.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And the next few codes cases, again, is there anybody in them for the next three codes cases? Mr. Turner?
Mr. Chairman, with regards to 2012-00628, I move that we reduce the fine to $4,295 if paid within 90 days.
Second.
Do we have a proper motion, proper second, and further discussion? Hearing now all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, with regards to case number 2012-00760, I move that we reduce the, reduce it down to $4,172, utilizing $2,055.68 in surplus funds received for a total of $2,116.32 if paid within 90 days.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second, and further discussion? Hearing now all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chairman, I, case number 22-008035, I move that we reduce the fine to $1,603 if paid within 90 days.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second, and further discussion? Hearing now all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? The ayes have it. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is our appointments. Commissioner Adams, Zach, you have any appointments you'd like to make?
I have none today.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir. Zoning Board of Adjustment, District 3 appointee, I'd like to appoint Hunter Winkleman. He's already turned in his application, I believe.
Good deal. All right.
And that's all I have today.
Thank you. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, I do, for the Fair Board Authority, District 1 appointment, I'd like to appoint Chris Middleton for that position.
Okay.
And then also for the Library Board, and I wish Nancy Taylor was here. I found out that there is a term limits for Library Board members, and it's two, three-year terms, and that is in, I guess, in their structure, in the bylaws. So anyway, Nancy was ready to step down anyway. She has served on the Crescent City Board for probably 30 years, and truly has been involved with this board, and so I want to thank her for her service, and I would like to nominate Ms. Tanya Flugel to serve as the District 1 representative.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
You may.
Are there any other boards that we have term limits on, other than the Library Board?
We'll have to get back to you on that.
You know, if you will, if you want to, and I'm not saying, I know you just appointed somebody different, but if you want to not run into that in the future, we can change that. That's not a statute. That's something we can change.
It is an ordinance, so we absolutely can change with the board's direction, but we could revise that ordinance should the board direct staff to do so.
Would you want any input? Because I had a talk with the Chair of Library Board, and they felt that it was a concern because there were some members that choose to continue, so if that's not a, you know, an in-depth process, that may be something that we need to look at. Because if you've got a good member and they're willing to continue to serve, there's term limits that I don't really like. So, but Nancy, at this particular point, she was ready to get off, so it didn't affect this one.
Mr. Adams, do you have a comment?
Ninety-nine point nine percent of the world, I believe, in term limits, but this has been the hardest committee to appoint someone to in my time here. I've had, it's been vacant like three times for me, and it's just, it's a hard one, there's not a lot of volunteers for it, unfortunately. So yeah, I would support that as well if we want to get that done.
So I think by consensus, I think you got. So I think by consensus, I think you've got four people sitting here right now that would like for some type of a relook at the ordinance to see about that and bring that back soon, because I was going to make one today, but I'm not sure mine would qualify either. So if you can bring that back as soon as possible. Is that consensus of board? Then we'll move on. So mine's, I'm going to put mine on hold, and everybody's been taken care of. So next, we'll go to our new business, and I want to move down, I want to change up some things first and go to item C first under new business administration, if you'll handle that for us. Sam, where you got that?
Sam Silver for administration. Mr. McLean will be, Wes Beck will be joining me. An opportunity has presented itself to seek for some funding to install electric vehicle charging stations in our community. This would be through federal funds. The source is in question whether it's going to be US or Florida DOT. We're working on that. We are coming before you at this time to get the permission to establish a private-public partnership with Beck to pursue these funds in accordance with Florida Statute two fifty-five point oh six five. We do have an interim agreement that is under review with our attorney at this time, and we'll bring it to you once it is being approved through the legal system. The reason for us coming to you now is that we have a very short timeframe to apply for these funds. The deadline is August twenty-eighth. There is a considerable amount of work and research that needs to be conducted. We have actually already started, but we would like your permission, the board's permission at this time, this blessing, to get started with this work contingent on the interim agreement being adopted hopefully at the next meeting. Mr. McLean, do you have anything you would like to add?
Wayne McLean, two eighty-five West River Road. I think this is a good opportunity for us to look into it, and especially with the, after the attorney's approval. I think it'd be good for the county and it'd give opportunity for Beck to be more involved. So it's a lot of ayes that need to be dotted, t's crossed before we go down the road, but I certainly hope the Commission would allow us to look at it.
Well, I want to say, I think it's a great community partnership that we can go after, and Beck Automotive Group has always been a Class A standard people in our community, and anytime we can be of service to our citizens in this arena and enter into a fine-public partnership with such a reputable firm, I think we should... Mr. Turner, you have the floor, sir?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to say that the only thing we're approving today is the concept that we're going to team up with a private entity to try and do something good for the community. That's all we're doing. We're not saying we're going to give them any money, we're saying we're going to do everything we can to join forces with them to look for ways to improve the community. I don't see any loss or any way you can even bend that into a loss. So, Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
Any proper motion, we have a second?
Yeah, second, I do have a question though.
Yes, Mr. Pickens?
What kind of time, is there any idea of a timeframe of the process of applying and then complying and then getting an answer of whether this will move forward?
The application is due, the deadline is August twenty-eighth.
Right, that's what you said yesterday.
However, when would the decision be made and the funds be made available to us? That is pretty much a gray area at this time. We don't have that answer. Prior experience with the federal government, it could be possibly a year.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Adams, Zach?
What exactly are we approving?
Excuse me?
Just, we're just approving having a partnership?
Yes.
And then we'll work?
That's what our motion was. We're going to have a partnership to look for grants.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor, sitting in five percent saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like sign? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, go back up to administration. Item A, Animal Rescue Consortium. Who has that? Julianne?
Yes, sir.
Hang on just a minute.
Thank you, Chairman. We're here today, we were reached out by the ARC, the Animal Rescue Consortium, and updated that the USDA grant for which we were hopeful to find some funding from has been placed on hold. The ARC has continued to work, and they do have a quote that they provided to us, which shows an estimated cost of one hundred and two thousand plus some change, and they are now working to seek some alternative funding sources to move forward with the initiative because it is something that ARC is still wanting to provide for the community. The county, when we heard this prior, made their funding contribution contingent upon receipt of the USDA grant. And at this time, ARC, knowing that that funding is not available, is asking the B O C C to make their funding not contingent upon the grant. And so ARC is here today to ask you for that.
Mr. Adams, Zach, do you have a question?
Yeah. I thought we had another contingency on the number of spay or neuters they would do a year or something. Didn't we have something like that in there as well?
So we had a promise of deliverables but not contingent upon the upfront funding. The upfront funding was to purchase the trailer, and then for that funding, right, for your transaction, they came back and said we would have some minimum threshold of...
It was like two seventy-four? I don't remember what, I think you guys... Okay. All right. I think it was two hundred and seventy-four dogs or cats or something, yeah, reduced fee or something.
That sounds high to me, Commissioner.
Oh, maybe. I don't know where two seventy-four came from, this is what I remember.
I just don't want to promise yet. That number sounds real high to me, so I don't want to promise that number.
I think it'd be two seventy-four.
Maybe you want it, yeah, right, you're going to negotiate for it. But the deliverables or the promise of the services rendered was not contingent upon the funding because the funding is an upfront cost that they need before that.
But it could be now though, right? If there is no alternative...
Could be what?
Could it be part of contingency now if we said...
So the only way you would make it part of the contingency is if you paid per spay or neuter.
I got you, I got you.
Right. Because they're trying to get the money on day one. That's their request. The request is the money on day one, and then they have committed to doing X number of services for the community. At what, and I think they had some buy-in, like the citizen had to pay a small fee, that kind of thing.
And I was just comparing it to what we did for a different agency with the bed nights and all that stuff.
Thank you. Any further comments? Please come up.
Thank you. Diane Kelly, one twenty-three Lakeside Lane, Crescent City, Florida. Thank you for the introduction too. Yes, we're here today, Ginny and I. Ginny Oakwood is the President of Animal Rescue Consortium. We're back here today because you may recall that we did present to you recently on a couple of occasions that we were pursuing a grant with the USDA for a fully-equipped surgical trailer for Putnam County. That would be our first and only fully-equipped spay and neuter portable capability. And when we presented, we did say that we were hopeful, we were pretty positive about a grant from the USDA, but we did not know for sure that that was going to come through. And that grant would have been seventy-five percent of the total funding request. We asked for Putnam County to fund some of the balance. We asked for twenty-five thousand. That was contingently approved. We've also been to the municipalities. We still have a little bit of work to do there, but we are making tremendous progress with them, and I can give you an update on that in a moment. But because the USDA grant has been delayed, and it's, all the rural development grants, according to the USDA, were delayed out of Washington. The funding was not approved for this year, even though they expected that it would be. And so the thing that we can do, we're still in the hopper for next year's consideration, but we can't wait. This community is in dire need of a spay and neuter capability. We see it every day. There's a lot of suffering out there, that a lot of folks are very much struggling with the finances to do these services. We do not want to wait. It's not the right thing. So with that, Ginny had mentioned in our last meeting here that if for any reason the USDA grant did not go through, we would have a Plan B or C. We would find a way to offset that. And we do have a donor. We have an anonymous donor who is donating fifty thousand dollars toward this capability, and we feel very confident about the vetting of this donor. We also, as far as the municipalities, since we met with you all, we've also been meeting with the municipalities, and where we are currently is, number one, Pomona Park is designating five thousand dollars, City of Palaka, ten thousand dollars. Weelaka, we expect it will be five thousand. We expect that to be finalized this evening, but that's not a locked-in situation. We are meeting with Crescent City Commission on Thursday. Their recommendation from their staff is five thousand, but it's not final until we have the meeting on Thursday. So we are making tremendous progress to get the funding needed for the trailer. We also did elect a different builder of the trailer that is a little bit less expensive, but it's almost one hundred and three thousand dollars. And so what we're asking for between Putnam County, B O C C, if you continue to support this, our anonymous donor, and the commitments that we have from others, we're at ninety thousand of the one hundred and three that we need, understanding we still have to lock in Weelaka and Crescent City. So we are very, very close to being able to launch the work, to begin the build of the trailer. So what we're asking for today is even though the USDA grant is on hold, meaning we're not considering that right now because we need to move forward, we're just asking that you continue to support us and allocate the twenty-five thousand. To the points raised earlier, we certainly will meet the commitments that we mentioned earlier. We will follow through on that, but we do really request that we get the support to move forward. So that's kind of why we're here. Ginny?
I have a question for you. So keeping the main thing the main thing, and sometimes I was part of a trailer situation that, I'm not going to say I'm disappointed in it, but kind of am a little bit, that we were involved in getting the trailer for a worthy cause, and then things happen.
Sure.
And staffing goes away and what have you, and the trailer sits vacant or dormant. It becomes a big paperweight at that point, and trying to revive it. So as I'm sitting here, making the main thing the main thing, and I'm going to act like a judge for a minute, why would I not just put twenty-five thousand dollars up and make it available for any spay and neuter person to be reimbursed countywide, no matter where they go? They bring us a receipt, I don't even know if it's possible. Bring us a receipt, come in here, I've got my dog...
Right.
You know, I couldn't afford to do it, I got it taken care of, and we reimburse the veterinarian. Why, I'm not trying to belittle the point. I know the importance, but I'm saying right now, if the main thing's the main thing, and believe me, it is, because I read Facebook and I see if you don't get your cat out of my yard, the cat's going to come up missing in certain communities. I see that all the time.
Sure.
So why would I not be a part of that versus the other? And that's just me asking you.
Yeah, and it's a very good question, and I think another commission did ask the same question, and the way I responded, which I firmly believe, is when we talk about paying or reimbursing somebody or making sure somebody can have their dog or cat spayed or neutered and allocate the funds that way, it's not as proactive as having a capability that can give and give and give on a continual basis. So we're investing in capital. This is, I don't want to say a gift that keeps on giving because that's kind of cliche, but it truly is. So it's investing, so twenty-five thousand dollars, you might be able to help spay and neuter, let's, I'm being hypothetical, let's say a thousand animals, but investing that in a surgical suite that can do many, many, many times that many animals on an ongoing basis, it's more proactive and it's much, and for every dollar, you're going to really help improve the lives of so many more animals and people. So I would say one is reactive, one is proactive and continues to give. The other thing I didn't mention about the trailer is that this is a fully-equipped surgical unit. People, we don't expect to stop with spay and neuter. People who have, a dog may have a laceration, you know, down the road, we expect to expand. So there'll be other medical services, low costs, that we expect to provide to this community, which they don't have today. So it's not just spay and neuter. So the future, it's going to be much broader. So that's how I would answer that.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, you have a comment?
I have to agree with the Chairman on this, I really do. I made the motion, if y'all remember last time, to do what we did, and we tied it to the grant because I don't believe in giving taxpayer money to charity. No, I don't believe in that. I think that people should decide what charities they want to give their money to, not pay it to the government, and we get to select charities. But I did go along with that because it was part of a program, part of a grant, part of a deal where we knew it was going to happen. I'm not going to be able to support this today, and it's going to be for the same exact reason that the Chairman just came up with. I believe that we would get more bang for our buck by giving certificates out to the people that pays a part of it. I don't think that we should give you free spay and neuter. I think we should give you a certificate that gives you half price or three-quarters off spay and neuter, and that you should be involved in it to some degree on your own. I have a different view of spay and neuter than some of y'all. I was told not too long ago that part of your group was trying to make it to where everyone in Putnam County had to spay and neuter their dog or get a fine, or if they didn't, then they would have to go get a permit in order to have a dog that wasn't spayed and neutered. You may as well come after my guns if you come after my hunting dogs and that I can't breed them, or somebody's working dogs. I know of a family that's had, that's for the last eighty years has had a line of working dogs that they bred for eighty years. So we're going to tell them that they've got to now have a permit to go in and breed their working dogs or spay and neuter them, or they could get in trouble for that?
Well...
I can't get there, I'm sorry.
Can I comment on that though?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Number one, on your comments that you raised, that's not really directly related to the trailer, but the one about spay and neuter requirements or fines, et cetera, that at this point is just thinking, just people's thinking. It's nothing set in stone. We're not planning necessarily on moving forward the way that you describe it. But there are situations where counties, like Putnam County, does need to do some work regarding people's accountability for their animals. It doesn't mean, like even if we tried to go a route to say, hey, there's some reasonable expectations that folks should take care of their animals and get them spayed and neuter, but there are always exceptions to that, like what you're mentioning. That's a very reasonable exception, but can we...
That's giving you twenty-five thousand dollars for a trailer is not going to make people more responsive or more, or make them want to do the right thing more than they already are doing it right now.
I don't think that's...
That gives an avenue for people to go get it done, but it's, in my opinion, right or wrong, in my opinion. I believe that the people are going to spay and neuter, are going to spay and neuter whether you do it or not, whether you give them a trailer, and the trailer may work fine, but like Commissioner Harvey said a few minutes ago, he's involved in another trailer, I think it's the dental one, isn't it? Yeah, the dental one. They put up a bunch of money, they got a trailer, everything's gung ho, it sits out there because they don't have a dentist.
Yeah, I don't think that's what we're, that's not what we're talking about though here, and here's what I will say about spay and neuter. There is a very large contingent of our population in our county who do not get their animals spayed and neutered, and it's not because they don't want to, it's because they cannot afford to. We deal with it every day. And I've done, as a grant writer for that USDA grant and other grants, I've learned a great deal doing tremendous research on studies that have been done, on demographics, on animal welfare, on why people do not spay and neuter. For example, the Best Friends Animal Society, who's leading the national charge of no-kill. And people don't, many people in our county do not spay, neuter their pets because they don't have the money, because they don't even have, many people don't have the gas to even travel to get an animal scheduled for it.
I appreciate the conversation, I do, but this is going to be one of those situations where we're just going to have to agree to disagree.
Okay, and that's fine. And I would just ask the rest of the commission, you know, we did meet here before, it sounded like you put your faith and trust in us for a twenty-five thousand dollar contribution. We went back, as we said we would, to Plan B or C, and we do have a committed donor that's been vetted, and so I would just ask that you still follow through with the twenty-five thousand because you're in vet, nothing's changed other than one donor. Why would one other donor possibly influence a commitment that you're making? I called, just so you know...
Hey, hang on a second. Mr. Adams, Zach, you have to make a comment?
Okay.
So, and I've heard some of the concerns that Commissioner Turner is saying. They've been holding a public forum meetings, they did two of them. So take it with a grain of salt too, some of the input isn't coming from them.
Right.
It's coming from the forty people in the room, and some of them come with ideas. It's coming from the 40 people in the room, and some of them come with ideas. Some of the things I heard in those meetings were far-fetched to me personally. Other things I heard in those meetings were fantastic. So we got to take that with a little bit of a grain of salt, because they're opening themselves up to the entire community to come in and say whatever they want. So I just wanted to say that. In the conversations I've had with these two specific women, they've been very forthcoming with, just like they are today, with their ideas. I guess my question to you would be this. If the commission, and I think that we do have a need, that money towards spay and neuter today would go further if we, if we said, hey, if we set up where animal services can say, you go to the veterinarian A and you bring in your voucher, we would refund 75% if we put some dollar amount to how much we would refund for a period of six months. And then maybe they could apply for the USDA grant next year, because that's when it comes available. Is that correct?
Yes, but now...
I get it, I get it puts you behind a thing, but we, our issue, like Commissioner, like Chairman Harvey said, is to get spay and neuters occurring as soon as possible in this community. And that is your goal as well, from listening to the meetings. I get it, the trailer is something that you think helps get us there. Funding towards spay and neuter helps get us there literally tomorrow. The difference between us doing that program, though, and their trailer is they have, from listening to people that work with them, they have a kernel knowledge and network within our community of people looking for that service, where we are taking people that happen to show up, you know, they're already advertising that there's, because some of them are already doing some of this work through other monies that they have and other things.
Getting other grants, yes.
So they have a network that we don't have. So that's the advantage of the trailer. I think we need to get something off the ground with spay and neuter. I don't know that it matters so much what it looks like to me, as long as we start helping the community, the people that want to spay and neuter the animals who can't afford it for whatever reason, whether it's temporary or permanent situations. That's what I, I hope we can move forward here today in some way. I don't, from listening, you don't, there's only four of us here, you don't have the votes to get the money for the trailer, it would take three of us. So I'd like to propose that we put 10,000.
Can I, Commissioner Pickens?
Oh, go ahead, yeah, yeah.
And then I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Commissioner Pickens?
Okay. I appreciate y'all attending again.
Thank you.
And slightly surprised at the conversation we're having, even though it has merit, there's no question. We had some of these conversations in our previous meetings with these ladies. We understand it's a problem. We understand that there could be definitely value if we just decided to give X amount of money per year each, and each year after that for the spay and neuter. I'm not for a mandatory spay and neuter of any type whatsoever. I don't think that's the subject here.
Right.
I understand that when you came to us, that there were some concerns from each commissioners. Jenny, we had a 30-minute conversation at least one time before y'all came, the first time and the second time, and you gave us the deliverables that satisfied this board, who I believe a 5-0 vote, to approve that we would give the 25,000 contingent on the grant and securing the money for the trailer. You had a Plan B and a Plan C. We're looking at Plan B now, so I really see no difference if we're the last donor, the last one, that you can prove to us that you have all the money secured. You don't have it now. You don't have a firm commitment from Crescent City. You haven't talked to enter Lockin. They should be involved, okay? You may get a commitment from Walaka, you have a commitment from Pomona Park. So I think maybe we need to whoa this. Now, if it's null and void because you didn't get it, what happens if they reapply or they wait? Are we still on the hook for 25,000 a year from now? Because that's what we said, contingent on a USDA grant. And then what does that do to y'all's program, other than it slows it down? Let me ask you a question. If we do not approve the 25,000, you go on and try to do the whole thing by yourself?
I don't think we can. I think that for us to be able to move, I think we'll be at least a year behind if you do not approve the 25,000. That's my opinion. And, and I will say once again, I don't know how to emphasize it, but the 25,000, just for a certain number of spay and neuter vouchers or reimbursing, is not going to go anywhere near as far... ... behind yet another year. We're the only county, other than Bradford, and all these surrounding counties who don't have this capability. Animals are, for anyone who loves animals, they're suffering every day. And homeowners are suffering every day because they cannot afford it. We see them, Jenny handles the calls every day. And can I just...
All right. We're going to...
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, but I still, I really am having a hard time. I understand the spay and neuter if we just donated some money, but I have a, what is actually the difference if they prove that they can raise the money and the 25,000 that we give, and it would be the last dollars to get this program on its feet?
Right. We could, we could set it up that way.
I don't understand that one. I'm having a hard time with that one.
So what you're saying is if they postpone this conversation, go out and talk to the others and then come back to us, would that be...
I think we need, we need to consider that, because we've already made a commitment to that they would get the grant, if they got the grant. Well, they didn't get the grant, but if they, she did say a Plan B. Now, we didn't say contingent on Plan B and C, we said on the USDA grant, which didn't happen. But I at least think we ought to give them the opportunity to go and secure the money and come back to us and say, we have the money, would you give us the 25,000? Because I do believe that the program will work, and I do believe the program will be more beneficial than just throwing money at it, which I'm not opposed. If we want to propose some money today, I'm okay with that, too, but I still think that just changing our minds of supporting them just because they didn't get Plan A and they have a Plan B and it seems viable, and if they don't come back in a month or so, then, then it just didn't work. Or they can wait till, you know, a year and reapply for the USDA.
Okay, before I go to Mr. Adams, Zach, I do want to ask a question to our staff. So in my thought of mind, and please, I support spay and neuter, not mandatory. Staff, my question is simply this. Let's just say, for example, that the board is concerned and we put 25,000 into a voucher program. Couldn't this organization technically earn that by doing spay and neuters and giving us, so it's, so I mean...
Sure, you can set it up any, any way you want. We can do any...
Correct.
Right.
Go ahead.
Right, we could, so you could do a reimbursement for services rendered, essentially would be what you were doing. You can put parameters on who would qualify, you know, Putnam County citizen who utilizes the services, and then they could, for a set price of some sort, or at least a max not to exceed per service. And then they would then get payment, much like you do for the Lee Conley House, right? They get, they can submit to us an invoice that says that they've housed X number of individuals for X number of nights, and then they get the contribution from the board.
Well, I guess my thought was, I mean, they wouldn't compete for, they could compete for all 25,000 in my mind, but it would be throughout the county, so somebody else, they might only get 18,000, they might get 15,000 because 10,000 went to other providers. I'm just saying, if we want to hit the ground running and take care of the main thing, then they still have an opportunity to compete. The money would still be there.
Can I just...
Mr. Adams, Zach, Mr. Adams, Zach was first, and then Mr. Turner.
Yeah. I like what I, both things that I heard, and I don't see why the alternative funding from another source affects our ability to fund the 25K. I do like the idea of coming back when you have those other ones secured and having us be the last one to hear it. I support that with Commissioner Pickens. But I think our issue is more urgent today. I was thinking 10,000, because I'd like to see us have money left in case that we end up being the last, they say, hey, we need the last, maybe it's 23,000, whatever it is from other funding that they get, and have us be the last when they present that. So I'd like to have that available. And I think what would 10,000, if we set it at a maximum of like 250 voucher, that would be how many spay or neuters?
Well, I think you also need to do a max for spay and a max for neuter, simply because those services have a, have a large disparity between the two.
Right. And what's, do we have a number for that, for what we see at animal services? Do we...
We do. Brian, can you phone a friend here?
You mean like a 50/50 or a 75/25, or...
But I think what she's saying is because the cost difference between spay and neuter is different, so you would set a maximum for each service at a different number.
So it's a little bit complicated because of the size of the dog, and also depends on if it's spayed or neutered. So if it's a female, 150 pounds, it's going to be X price, and it substantially goes up by the weight of the animal because the anesthesia, they do. So it's kind of complex. I have numbers on that. I mean, I wasn't really prepared to give you that.
So what's a, what's a small female dog?
A small female dog will range between 80 to 100 theoretically, but like 125 pounds German Shepherd, female, would be about 400 and change. So also depends on which, that you go to. They can't get you in for quite some time either, to say all of that, too. So I have those numbers and I can give you, because I've talked to our three that we have here closely related, but again, I'm not really prepared to give you the exact numbers. It varies based off the animal.
Would it be inappropriate for us to ask animal services to come up with a plan for an amount of money with the most per spay and neuter that we could have in the next meeting that would cover this during our, this type of part of it, new business?
To clarify, what you're asking is staff to come up with an immediate amount, immediate solution that would be available for citizens to have a voucher-like program?
Yes.
We absolutely can.
And I think the voucher-like programs should only be open to groups like ARC and veterinarians. I don't think it should be open to just, we shouldn't have citizens coming in off the street going...
They can't negotiate for me.
Yeah, I think we need...
I think we're discussing the parameters that we want them to put in.
We are, but we're going to do it as... Okay.
Yeah, well, it's not your turn to speak.
I understand, but you're not going to negotiate for me either.
All right, all right.
No, I'm talking for myself, thank you.
I do have a comment, though.
We're talking theory right now, we haven't given instruction yet.
No, I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I just make one other comment, please?
Not right now, hang on just a minute.
Okay, it's directly related to what you're talking about.
We got people that want to speak. Okay, Mr. Adams, are you done?
Yeah, and I guess I was more asking the commission if that type thing would be on the next agenda would be a wave of hands, or we do...
Commissioner, just to clarify, the only thing that if the board wants to entertain it, I would disagree with your stance that only certain individuals are eligible, because it is very common that for our citizens, that they may come in and take their animal out of county to a veterinarian simply for supply-demand type thing. So the only, if the board wants to move forward on a proposal like that, I would ask you not to limit it to a particular Putnam County service provider, but a Putnam County citizen getting service.
Perfect. And if I hadn't answered that question, I wouldn't have got that response, so thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner, you have the floor, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My apologies, Commissioner.
No problem.
I'm a, I'm probably as a big advocate on one side of this as you guys are on the other, because I don't believe in doing what you're doing is going to shorten the amount of irresponsible pet owners that we have in this county. But if we're going to have this conversation about animal control or animal services, I want to have the whole conversation, not the part about just the, are we going to put in 10 or 20,000 to spay or neuter dog, people, dogs that could probably afford to do it anyhow? I want the whole conversation. I want the conversation that we're building a new animal services building out there that's going to be full the day that the last post is put in the ground. Because we, the policies that we have at animal services have failed, and they're not going to get any better. And what's going, we don't have an animal services, we have a kennel for the employees to pet and love the dogs. I'm glad they do, but we can't have dogs out there for two or three years at a time. We don't have a kennel. So that's all right. If y'all want to talk about the, putting some money aside for this, let's have the whole conversation. Let's have the whole thing about what we need to do about the shelter, what we need to do about spay and neuter. I think we also need to be able to, if we're going to put money up, we need to put money up to have the ones spayed and neutered out there where they can be adopted out of our shelter for less money than what they are. I'd rather them be adopted than us go out there and euthanize them. If we could get them adopted, because we pay to spay and neuter them, I'd rather do that than give these ladies 25,000 in the hope that we might get some spay and neuter that would further the community. I think that would be a much better position. Also, Commissioner Wilkinson, I believe at her last meeting or the meeting before, made a motion to put some money up for spay and neuter, and it basically got shot down because, in my opinion, it wasn't time to talk about it yet. But guys, it's time. It's time. Y'all want to have this conversation, then let's have it. But let's have it for real. Let's not dance around the edges and let's not, we're going to give a few dollars to spay and neuter a dog or something like, let's go ahead and bite the bullet and have this conversation once and for all, and try to figure out a sustainable way to move animal services forward in the future. It's not going to be an easy conversation, not going to be an easy conversation, because no matter how you decide what side of that issue, there's going to be a large contingent of people in this county that are going to get upset. That's why we haven't done it before, because it's not been a comfortable place to be. But it needs to be done. So I'm not going to support this today, but I will support us having a meaningful conversation about animal services, and we can talk about the spay and neuter in that, in that.
My recommend, well, my recommendation to y'all today is table this thing, let's move forward and, because I don't think you like, Mr. Adams, Zach said you have the votes right now. And I do agree, Mr. Turner, this is a in-depth conversation that really needs to take place at this level for a complete animal services conversation. So Mr. Adams, Zach, you have the floor, and then we're going to end the conversation.
Yeah. Could we still get wave of approval for them to pursue the spay and neuter item separately? Because I think there's urgency to that, separate from the overall conversation, which I think we should have and necessarily, and absolutely have to have. And I think that conversation does need to include citations as well, so giving our animal services folks the, just to add something to it, so we added some other things to it with the shelter and things, so we give them that tool in their toolbox as well. So I make a motion that we have staff present in the next board of county commissions meeting, a presentation on how we would fund spay and neuter, up to 10,000, and how that would look.
Do we have a second? Okay. Die's for lack of a second.
I'd like to make a comment. This is an issue that it needs to be addressed, but this issue that they're coming to us for, to me, is for people who want to but can't afford. It's also maybe for colonies that may be able to identify of cats, to be able to try to control them. That's what I feel this program is, and to go about the county. It's not to make a responsible dog, cat owner have to comply to accounting ordinance.
Correct.
That we don't have, that I would not be in favor for. So I think we're two different things. Since we're, we've got this conversation, I think we need to move forward somehow to have a discussion, but the animal control advisory board need to be involved in this. Staff needs to be involved in this, and the county commission. So this will not be a short solution at all. But I still think what these ladies are asking for, and there's not the votes to move this forward, so I agree with Chairman Harvey. Go back and continue your efforts and then come back to us at a later date, and maybe there'll be a different appetite. So I think it's a separate matter with y'all, and with this, I don't know how y'all want to move it forward, but I think the commission and the animal control advisory and staff need be involved in this one with exactly what we're trying to accomplish here, because I don't think a responsible cat or dog owner, we don't need any type of ordinance that makes them or controls them, you know, at all. So that's all I got.
All right, thank you.
Do I have a right to make any comments yet, or no?
No, we're done with that conversation today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I appreciate your comment. It's been a great conversation. Item B, administration opioid abatement grant. Who's got that? Julianne?
Yes, sir, I'm going to begin it. I'll probably, again, phone a friend, but I'm going to start it. As you know, through the opioid settlements that have come down from this state, we have two different funding sources. One comes directly into us, and then the second one is one that's managed by the grant administrator, L S F. LSF, and it has very strict requirements onto what activities can be funded and what it can be utilized for. It also has very strict timelines onto use of those funds. So if you'll remember, in our first year of funding, we funded three different initiatives with three different agencies. We had a large funding which funded the sheriff's office, a couple of initiatives for them, the school district, and then it bought the capital and equipment needed to launch a community paramedicine program. As we began this process, we've gotten the information on the 18-year schedule and it's included in your packets. So there will be 18 years of funding and what the grant administrator recommends or at least offers as one of the prime things that other entities are doing is utilizing those dollars for the operational cost of that community paramedicine program. So today, staff has met and worked together to determine what would be needed and the first thing that we would need is the personnel. It would be three new paramedics. You would have a 24-hour shift, so one would work each day, not three working each day. And then the implementation plan, which is due to LSF by or before July 31st, is there for you and they have vetted and approved it in its format. And so the board is here. We do have Chief Hitchcock or Deputy Chief Hitchcock as well as JR, who can tell you more about what the community paramedicine program is.
I think it start, it can be very, very robust and complex. It's a community need, as much as it is for opioids, as we have, a lot of times we get confused with opioids, you know, somebody got addicted to them at some point in their life. As we've sat down with Clay County and Flagler, both, they put in some pretty unique programs that have helped citizens out with their programs. One of the ones that like Clay did, that I know is not necessarily opioid, but they had a huge problem with patients falling and they went out and they did a no-slip-sox campaign and they were able to get it for the people and it was, it was a direct thing through their community paramedic program. But the other thing we've got to realize is we've got to educate the people that are young, you know, to not start down this trail. So that's another aspect that I think these people could go into the schools and they could educate and they could teach. Actually, I had somebody come to me the other day and said, you know, they had the perfect opportunity to become a drug addict. I mean, all their family was drug addicts and they, and they had an opportunity. And she told me, she says, you know, the reason why I didn't turn to it? And I said, no. She said, because when, back when the DARE program was, the sheriff's office used to do, she said a cop came into school and scared her to death and said, if I ever touched it, I would die. And she said it actually set her program out straight. So I mean, I mean, as we can influence these children as they're younger, it gives them a way to do. So I mean, we have already ordered educational material for the schools that we could go out and try to do education in schools. We've done, we've ordered like pill boxes in order for like our elderly folks to be able to help them organize, because a lot of times our people get discharged and they're not exactly sure how to take their medications. Is it something the program that this could do that if somebody reached out, they could, we could give our cards to the hospital and they could say, hey, if you need any instruction of this following up, they could always go in and just give a card, you know, and follow back up. So if there was any confusion, because a lot of that is our overdoses, is that we actually see people that maybe just didn't take their medication right or forgot or something like that. We also run a lot of repeat people that maybe just need a community resource outlet, maybe it's through Veteran Services or whatever it is. So there's a lot of outreaches I think this program could start with. It could do community-based CPR classes for civic groups that these people would be responsible for. So it could, it has no end. I mean, it could be just truly something I think our community needs as far as a liaison basically into our community, but also taking care of our opioid-type problems we have on the streets.
Mr. Turner?
My only concern with this is if you look at the funding that's, the projected funding for this, it starts out at $652,000 a year, but it ends up at $67,000 a year. What I want to make sure of here is that we don't create a dog that the tail's bigger than the dog and so we got to start buying a bigger tail later on at the county to make this work. So if we, whatever we're going to do, what y'all recommend, I'm on board as long as there's no recurring expenses. If you have recurring expenses that are involved in this program, then I got issues because, especially if the recurring expenses are higher than $67,000 a year. Because that means that for all these years, if you get a recurring expense, a future commission is going to have to pony up the money to keep that going or kill the program. So I believe that you can do a lot of good with the money. A lot of the things you said just now, JR, are really good things for the community. But if we could do it without, without generating recurring expenses, then we'd be ahead of the game. So like I said, especially if they're more than $67,000 a year in recurring expenses, buying pills or buying, doing a program or whatever, to me is not a recurring expense. If you hire an employee or five employees to do this program, you've just got five employees. And you know, and I know, that when the funding runs down to where it doesn't cover it, then the commission at that time is going to almost have to come up with the money to make that program carry on. That's just the way it works.
And Commissioner Turner, if I could, Mr. Chairman, that's a great point. And what we did learn is when we did our state EMS inspection with the Florida Department of Health, is there's a very easy transition program to make a community paramedic, what they call a community healthcare worker, which is billable through Medicare and Medicaid. So there will be a funding mechanism. We would never bill the individual, but I mean, if we did go by there or did perform a service, we could absolutely recoup some of our dollars by billing insurance and Medicare and Medicaid through the community health worker. It is not reimbursable as a paramedic, but they are reimbursable as a community healthcare worker. And Chief Hitchcock went to a program, I think it was down in Cape Canaveral, if I'm not mistaken, and learned about that to where we could actually transition the folks into community healthcare workers, which does allow them to be able to absorb and maintain that program moving forward that's billable through our billing department.
That also slows down recurring expenses.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Adams, hang on just a minute. Mr. Pickens, your light's not working. Have you been?
I've been trying to get that fixed for a number of years.
Well, okay.
That's because all equipment's down in District 1. We don't have anything to work on.
There we go. Can't miss that whenever he's.
I'd rather have that than a working light, so.
Mr. Commander, and then I'll call him.
So just because I travel different places, to add into what Mr. Grimes is, are kind of expressing as far as what the path forward looks towards Commissioner Turner's concerns is, there's good out there and it's not a guarantee that this is how it will impact us, but there's good data out there that shows that with these community paramedic programs, you start seeing less of the costs coming into the actual fire rescue service. So it frees up money that way and actually ends up being a net cost thanks to the county.
I agree. Okay, I'm going to call him, Mr. Adams, at first and then Mr. Pickens.
Yeah, I was going to say something similar to that, but the bottom line is every transaction or every human being that we create that no longer has an opioid addiction or delays their opioid addiction or is no longer on drugs or is not on drugs for a period of three years and maybe they relapse back, saves our community money, saves our community in healthcare costs, it saves our community in crime, it saves our community in so many other ways that are immeasurable. At some point, we have to take this subject seriously and $67,000 compared to $307,000 is an absurd amount if you take our total budget and the fact that we need to figure out ways to improve the overall health of this community. We've been talking about it, it's been talked about for the years before I was on board and we've been talking about it on this board and we really, we have this opportunity to get something started. And worst-case scenario, if it didn't work in a future board, and three of us will not be on this board after November, decided it was not working with some sort of measurable data, they could back out of it. So I love the idea, I love the idea of transitioning it to the community health worker. We need to take this seriously and we need to move it forward, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Adams. And Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, as Commissioner Turner said, and we spoke about it yesterday, sustainability of this program, so it is three new hires, correct? Okay, but then with going to the community healthcare worker, that they transition out of that into that particular model and then we would be billable, would be sustainable.
Sure. And I don't want to interrupt you, but just keep in mind, these people are eligible to work on an ambulance and it never seems like, you know, if the program, like to Commissioner Adams' point, if the program didn't work in five years, I could back them off and put them onto an ambulance, you know, and fill a position off of that. So we're not in a position to where we couldn't absorb it into some area of the thing where we already have a vacancy. So if that would give you any kind of clarification.
Thank you. That's all I have.
And I want to say something along those lines. You know, when I first heard about this a few years back in Ponte Vedra at a function, Clay County presented it and they were seeing immediate results based on the frequent calls they were getting. You know, it's sad to me because there's elderly people that live around me that take medicine and they forget what they take. And here you are, you got somebody in who's been prescribed an opioid, they want to do the right thing, but they don't know if it's 3 o'clock, 9 o'clock, 6 o'clock, they don't know, did I take that medicine? And how many times have we, even when we're sick, go, did I take that pill that I was supposed to take? Unless you put it in something and it's not there anymore, I put an alarm on my mother-in-law's phone, tells her when to take her pill, you know? But we got to do something. And I'm with Commissioner Adams, we got to do something better than what we're doing now. And I believe we're going to see savings in this. And if we don't, I'm with Commissioner Adams, then we move them over to a situation that we already need them in anyway. Commissioner Turner?
What other kinds of things are eligible to be paid for other than the paramedicine program? I know it's not a paramedicine program grant or whatever. It's, there's other things that qualify to.
Yes, sir.
I don't need an, you know, extensive list, but just maybe just the type of things that that could be used for, because I'm starting to lean towards the paramedicine myself, but I'd like to know what my other options would have been.
Yes, sir. The comprehensive list is included in that packet under Core Strategies, but they focus on, they're very specific, naloxone or other FDA-approved reverse opioid drugs are allowable, medication-assisted treatments, so your treatments that allow someone who wants to be in recovery and addicted to begin a process of detox. The pregnant and postpartum is very specific as to what's allowed. Neonatal abstinence has a very specific program under it. Expansion of warm handoff programs and recovery services, again, that's going to be part of a physical person being a liaison between someone who's looking for recovery services and a service provider in or outside of the community who specializes in that. Social workers and behavioral healthcare workers are allowed.
I feel sorry for George. I bet he never gets a word in edgewise.
I'm sure he does.
Quick question, please, ma'am. Nah, I'm in trouble, trouble.
You are in trouble. You really are.
She's just determining how bad the trouble is.
Have y'all discussed amongst yourselves, I know that you've had multiple meetings about this for a year now, off and on, have we thought about maybe setting part of this money aside for helping people that wanted to enter rehab, but there was a money obstacle that was keeping them out of rehab? Or is that something that is or is not part of the issue or the, or part of what it would qualify?
So I believe.
Saying that is an issue, that some people would like to go to rehab, but they don't have insurance and they don't have the money and they don't have whatever, so they can't really go to rehab. Where if we had some kind of, I mean, we were talking earlier today about castrating a dog. It seems to me like we could take the money and spend it a whole lot better to help people out that were really, truly wanting to be helped out, that take that first step into rehab. So, but can't because of their existing funds, so.
We did talk with SMA and Dr. Russo there. They've also applied for a grant of like a million dollars, I think is what they were awarded, to do a program just like you're speaking about. I think it's partnered in with the sheriff's office. I did have a little bit of concern with it. We're trying to work through it. Was the problem that the way that grant currently is written is they had to be incarcerated in order to do, to qualify to go into the facility. I'm like, well, isn't that what we're trying to prevent is incarceration and keeping them out of the jail? So we're trying to work with them and try to get around some of the allocation and Colonel Wells may be able to speak to it better than I can.
When they come out of jail.
It's when they, it's when they come out of jail that they have a grant for to receive them. And I'm trying, well, can we get somebody in there to you before they go to jail? Or they have created that cycle? So I think with SMA's program that they have launched, they actually were, got a grant on the other side, too, that helped with the community paramedicine as far as like.
So are we in year one? Be the harm or would it really mess up y'all's program, what you've got planned? Because I don't want to get in the way of it. If we took a third of this money and we took 212 and we started your first steps in winding up your paramedical program that you're wanting to do and took $100,000 for the first year and just put it into a fund that someone could apply for that they didn't have to go to jail, if they wanted to go to rehab and that they didn't have to go get locked up to go to rehab, that we could like give them a grant for the first month or two of rehab or something. It just seems to me like that's the people that are falling between the cracks right now, are the people that have had, because you're never going to get over addiction until you're ready. It's got to be you're ready. And so if you're ready and you're in jail, they have ways to send them to rehab. But if you're ready and you're at home and you've just, you're tired of doing drugs and you're, well, you're wanting to get over it, but you don't have insurance or wealthy parents or wealthy friends or whatever that can send you to rehab for a month, you're just stuck because you can't get through that first month yourself if you're truly addicted. I don't believe you can. So I'm wondering if maybe that wouldn't be something that we would look at to, and just see for the first year if it works. If it doesn't, then go next year and spend it all on paramedicine.
We're looking to see if it'll fit inside that strategy. I don't know if it will or not. I mean, it's very specific on what it can, what can happen. But I think that's another avenue where our community paramedics can help, is they'll be able to know where the resources are. Because in other counties, for instance, in Clay, there is Clay behavioral where they can actually get people in. The problem is, is nobody knows all the key aspects of getting somebody into the treatment facility like you speak of. And I'm sure there's programs out there that will pay for them to go to those things, but nobody knows how to do it and, not nobody knows how to do it, nobody has, as that is their initiative and that's what these folks can do, they can take that as their initiative to make sure that they're getting these people into the treatment facilities.
I'm not trying to kill your program, JR, really not.
I know you're not.
I'm just trying to figure out a way to make it fit, fit more holes, more pegs and more holes as we go along. Because I know that's one that's just not out there that I'm aware of, that there's people that can get that help. I just don't know that there's there and that is a need also. Somebody that's really wanting to quit, but needs that first month's help. They need it and they, no way to get it.
Just one comment, Mr. Turner, and to JR's point. Some of these privately-owned rehabs without insurance are $1,000 a day. You know, so you look at minimum stay, you could be at a $30,000 stay without insurance or assistance. But where I think the bang for the buck comes from is there are those experts out there that are very, very, very good at finding placements. They have connections with all of these rehab facilities. They have ways to get people to tag into Medicare, Medicaid to help pay for these things. So that liaison position may be the bigger bang for a buck versus $20,000 per month for one person to go to a 30-day rehab.
But we weren't, we weren't saying getting, doing away with that.
Oh, no, no, I agree.
We have $312,000 if we took 100 and tried this new program, that still gave you $212,000 to go towards your liaison program.
Yeah, you know, you had the, the paramedicine paramedics, which is a great program, because we can, we want to assist with that, too, and then had this one, you know, a person that was dedicated liaison to help people find placements. One of the side effects you're going to also see out of this paramedicine program is it's very, very common in other counties that JR's folks that are practicing this paramedicine are going to find out how some specifically elderly individuals are being exploited and their drugs are being diverted to the street. Happens all the time by a unruly grandson or a young neighbor that lives in the neighborhood and then this is something they'll be able to discover, hey, these medicines are missing, they're making their way to the streets. And that's where we will get involved and work with them to do that enforcement. We see it all the time where somebody calls in and says, hey, I got 60 pills, I got them five days ago and they're not here anymore. And we find out, well, your grandson's taking them and he's selling them on the streets or whatever the case is. So it'll work hand in hand, but I agree and I love any way we can helps my pay for rehab, but some of these things are astronomical and I don't know how far it would go. And then there may even be opportunities in this, I don't know, I didn't hear it come up, but totally, you know, what you guys think, maybe some opportunities to enhance maybe drug court programs or something a little bit through this to get people into that, because when you, when they're in drug court, the rehab's taken care of.
Well, I think it's a wonderful, excuse me. Well, I think it's a wonderful, excuse me, yeah, I saw Mr. Adams go ahead. Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's great to get it up and running. It might not be available to take 100,000 this year, but truly, once we can find the need, and that need can come back from the, from your group, and say, we need a need of this, then let the board decide at that time. But I do think we need to get it up and running. And Colonel, I'm gonna say this about what you just said. Not only is it sometimes that the family members are stealing the medicine, but maybe the doctors are giving it too frequently, where, I know in my family's case, it's a 30-day supply. And, you know, it's, it's down to the wire that we go get another 30-day supply. So that, that might be more helpful to get people, but I think we need to get this program up and running to make it successful. Mr. Adams, that?
Yeah, I like the program as presented. I, I agree that doing more for an individual, it would be a great idea. I think the cost of that would be in the millions. I don't think it would be in the hundreds of thousands. I think 100,000 just scratches the surface for four or five people. I think this other program, potentially with that same 100,000 people, could, $100,000 could reach 50, 60 people. So they maybe give them that input where they can get two other resources to get to other areas. Because there are resources. I mean, when we had the consortium, which I still think goes on, there was 40-some people here with services from all different counties and areas. Not all of them did the same thing. There was a lot of overlap, and there's a lot of stove piping, like there's a lot of these things when you're talking about government money. So I support it the way that it's presented.
And I want to say, before I turn to Mr. Suggs, this is, this is money coming from the industry that caused the problem. Truly, we're trying to get reimbursed on some of what they caused, but we're really not. We're going forward with a plan, and this is not taxpayer money, where you're just going to throw it at a entity and hope it gets better. This is the entity that caused the problem, and we're in that lawsuit, getting that money back. And we're, I think this is a great conversation of how we can help the citizens of Putnam County, who are directly affected by this. Mr. Suggs, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. It's, it's, as you know, Commissioner Wilkinson's not here today, and she has attended several meetings with us on the paramedicine program. And she and I talked as recently as yesterday regarding this, and never have I, nor will I want to talk in the place of a commissioner, however. I think it would be inappropriate if I didn't share the energy and the passion that she had for this program as well. And it was due to her efforts that we scheduled the meetings that we've had with the other counties to do that. And so I just didn't want it to be remiss this morning, that with her not being here, that she is very passionate about this as well. So whatever the commissioner would like to do, we'll certainly move forward with. But I, I thought it was appropriate just to share her, her comments and concerns.
Thank you. And, and she did give me permission to share that she is, her and her family are sick today, and would covet your prayers for that. Mr. Turner?
Yeah. Please understand that nothing I've said today is meant to mean that I'm against your paramedicine program. I just think the discussion needed to be had, that it's not the only option that we have in spending this money. There's other options. And so is this the best way? If this board feels so, I'm on board. I'm on board, I really am. But I think that conversation needed to be had today, that that wasn't the only option, that there were many options, and that was, that was just the one that we selected.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I think that's, Mr. Turner, Commissioner Turner, we all on this side of the ice absolutely agree with the conversation from both sides. So there was no intent there, but absolutely, we agree. We always want to look at every option that's available to us before we move forward with taxpayer dollars.
Well, that's why we're all up here, is to have the conversation. Mr. Pickens, you have a floor?
The, the program that you're presenting, is it gonna take the whole 300? Or would it, can you carry that over, and it'll fund some next year? Or you use a third year funding for this particular program?
I don't think we can carry funds over. So it would fund all of it, but we gotta have operational dollars in there, too, right? Because if we're gonna do it, we gotta have the gas to get the paramedic around that I don't think should come out of general taxpayer dollars. Also, there's some expensive medications that have to be bought, that are through our medical director, that will have to be administered to people with the opioid problems on the streets, that are gonna have to be bought into this program. And also, as that time goes by, there's gonna be shortages of material, you know, that maybe we needed to buy 10,000 more things to go into the school system, so we can educate our children. So there's gonna be operational expenses that go with it, so it's not just salaries and people, but removing a large portion of it, that would cripple the program.
Okay, but in a few years, it would, so it would eat up. This program would probably take up year three, correct?
Yes, sir.
And then maybe into year four, and then it'll transition to the health.
Yes, sir. As soon as we get it up and running, we'll try to get it transitioned as quick as possible into that community healthcare worker, so it becomes, start being reimbursable, so it can have long-term sustainability. And also, if we need to expand it through ability to bill, I think it'd be very, very wise.
Well, we're not shooting in the dark here.
Excuse me, Mr. Pickens.
No, you're fine.
We're not shooting in the dark. We have other agencies that have done this appropriately, and we know if we follow them, we can, we can be successful in that. So commissioners, what we're at, what the, what the action items are, is approve a hiring, three new community paramedics, approve the two-year implosion plans to be submitted to the grant administrator.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of staff regulations.
Thank you.
A second.
Two seconds, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. And moving along, next item is our MSBU assessment rate changes, page 706. Who's got that?
Move approval.
We got a motion to move approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion on it?
Under discussion.
Under discussion.
I did have a talk with Tony about the, that one MSBU. I thought it was still a little high, and I hope that the commission will take a little stronger look at it. They were able to take about $13 off this year, and he explained to me that they're trying to fix some drainage issues in the area, and they had more material, and it was just neglected for so many years, because they had a $38, wondering it wasn't enough money to do anything with. So I just wanted to take this opportunity to shout out to Tony, doing a good job, and, and appreciate the conversation we had this morning. So my motion stands, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Adams, that comment?
Yeah, and the Interlochen Boulevard one, which I think it says Interlochen Lake Estates Boulevard, MSBU. So we did have conversations with several community members out there, that live out there. We did relay the, the reason why it's going up. They, that one particularly did not go up in, in their initial raising of them. There's been a huge need for materials out there, because there's the washouts and stuff, and, and things like that. So, you know, to do right for themselves, we, we needed them extra funds, and the community is in agreement with it, at least all the people I've talked to, which is dozens at this point. And granted, there's 1,000 units out there, but a lot of them are just lots that are owned by people we don't know who they are. So I just wanted to say that out loud, so that anyone watching understands why it's going up this 20-some dollars, or $30. The money will go towards materials and improving those, those roads further.
And, you know, before we take a vote on it, I want to say, you know, for years, until this board decided to index them and make them a variable, there was no money in some of these, and you're right, and they were neglected. And what happens when you don't have any money? You cut services. And that's just not the right way of doing an MSBU, so I appreciate. We do have a proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Next is our, we're gonna take a two-minute break.
All right, we're going to reconvene our meeting. Everybody's back in, if you'll find your seats, please, and go to Public Works, the water utility rate. Who's got that? JR? Okay, hang on a second. Commissioner Turner has asked a point of privilege.
I'd like to start this one, and JR can kick in. I know that they did a water rate study, and the water rate study actually says that we need a whole lot more money than what staff, current staff recommendation is. Now, I'm not saying that we go all the way up to fifty-eight dollars, which is what we need to make ourselves whole in this thing on a base rate, but I think we need to definitely go up higher than five dollars in one year. I think that's just silly. I think that's just dancing around the edges of the problems that we have. I'm not, like I said, I'm not, I'm not saying that we should go all the way to fifty-eight in one year because we'd all probably get hung by the public because that's too much of an increase, but going up to a forty-dollar base rate and an eight-fifty consumption, basically what they're, what they're recommending for a twenty-six year, let's just go straight up to that, starting, skip the twenty-five year, and go straight up to the twenty-six year, because like I said, it's not, that's only about a half of what we need to be at to help us be sustainable, and everybody wants the system to be sustainable, but even these rates won't get us there, it's just another step in the direction of our plan to get it sustainable.
So, your recommendation is the 2026?
I'd like to make that motion, that we take the 2026, what's, for the budget year coming up, October first, that we use a forty-dollar base, eight-fifty consumption, a fifty-dollar base on wastewater, and a ten-sixty-three consumption on wastewater.
Any proper motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Yes, sir, for discussion. Mr. Pickens, you have a discussion?
I want to hear from Deputy County Administrator Grimes. I know he was going to make some comments, but, and I do have a question after this, is it the three percent CPI each year after that? So, we'll be moving forward, there'll be some type of increase, or even look at the increases if needed.
So, when Florida Rural Water did the rate study for us, their, their recommendation was doing basically two parts of that. They said to put a three percent escalator in there as CPI, or if the CPI is greater than three percent, take what the CPI was that year in order to sustain your, to maintain stability. Like, two years ago, I think, I think our CPI was like eight-point-one percent, if I'm not mistaken, was the number. They said that they had taken the eight-point-one. We didn't take, we haven't taken anything, I think, since 2018, so we're already, you know, just a little bit behind the, the timing rates, and I think Commissioner Turner was spot-on. There's no way possible for us to take on the bite of the better place where it takes, you know, that money out to pay the mortgage payment for no better term or the, the note on the plant. That would be unfair, and that's where that fifty-eight dollar, and that was taking on the, all the debt service and operations, but I think, I just want to make a point of clarification from what I heard from Commissioner Turner, or you said the, the 2026 of the eight-fifty consumption rate, I think you said ten-fifty?
No, that was, ten-sixty-three was for the wastewater consumption.
Okay, 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 I got you. So, yes, that, that would be, I mean, our recommendation was, the Florida Rural Water took us up three percent at a time, and then we were sustainable, and I think it was, their jump, jumps got us sustainable in 2026, but they still said that the, you needed, they didn't ever put into consideration for the debt service of, of the, of the water plant, was never through their entire projection, so with this one, I think we're still a little bit behind even the note for the, the plant, but, I mean, I think with some growth, we, we can get there further down the line, but today, it's, we're still not even a hundred percent sustainable.
Well, I totally agree that we need to put something in there at some point about a three percent minimum or CPI if it's higher. I hundred percent agree with that. The reason I didn't include it in there this morning is I truly believe that next year's commission sitting up here needs to do the same thing we did and go up more than a three percent minimum or, or a CPI, because if they don't, they're not going to ever be sustainable, and so I think they're going to have to go up at even a higher rate. We just can't go up that much in one year. It just wouldn't be fair on the public, and so, I, I don't mind if the commissioners are thinking that, and probably it is a very good idea to go in there and, 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 Mr. Chairman, if I may add that to my motion?
You may amend your motion to?
I'd like to amend it to state that we have a three percent minimum increase every year up to a maximum of the CPI. And that can be something, they can just?
Okay, so, basically, the forty-dollar water, eight-fifty consumption, fifty-dollar wastewater, ten-sixty-three consumption, and a three percent increase up to the maximum of the CPI?
Yes, three percent minimum up to a maximum of, of whatever the CPI is. So, if CPI is two-point-five, then we'd get a three, but if it's four-point-five, we'd also get the four-point-five, whatever the CPI is, but a minimum of three percent, I've got to have it, and there will be?
And, Mr. Pickens, your second is the motion, would you?
I'll amend my, my second, yeah.
Okay, so, we have a proper, Mr. Adamsack, you have a floor discussion?
It was fifty-eight with debt and everything for water, what is it for wastewater?
It's just, the way the wastewater is collected, is it one-hundred-and-twenty-five percent of your water rate? There is no sewer meter, so it's just metered basically off of your, your, off your water rate.
Assuming what goes in goes out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The, the adjustment, I don't know that it matters, I mean, I liked what you said at first, better, that the next commission should do more, because I think there's, when we talk about the community, there's, the majority of the community has nothing to do with this, paying into it and getting no benefit, so I see it from the flip side. I don't know that I have anyone in my entire district that benefits from this, and they paid into it for every year, forever since its inception, to cover the costs, the shortfall. So, I'm for moving it up as far as we think we aggressively can do it, to, to get to the break-even point, and I've, I've said that from the day I got elected, it was part of my campaigning, so I'm glad we're making this move. I don't know that we need the three percent, because I think the next year's commission should, should make the decision, but I'm not going to vote no because of it, so.
Well, we got it built in, so then if they don't get around to it, at least there's going to be a percent going up instead of it being stagnant, just like it has been now since 2015.
Yeah, if I was worried that they weren't going to get around to it, I think we should raise it to fifty, but that's a different conversation, I guess.
All right, so we have proper motion, proper second, any further discussion hearing at all in favor, significant, obviously, and I?
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Next on our agenda is public comment on miscellaneous items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow the citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect the board will engage in debate or deliberations about matters on which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Public comment cards are conveniently located in the back of the room, and should be submitted to the deputy clerk, Nathalie, over here to my left, your right of the podium. So, our first speaker today, and let me get my time, is Dan Steele. Mr. Steele, if you'll come up, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Dan Steele, I live in 202 May Lane here in Interlaken, Florida. What I'd like to bring up is if you take 315 north to McGill, go down to the end of Mariners' Lake Road, turn north, and go up to, you get to Adrian, up there, it's south of Adrian. There's a house up there that's got, and I brought this up about two months ago, about street signs, and you people told me that you can put these signs up, and a half an hour later, they've been taken down, okay? And I know the sheriff department, and probably some of you have been past this place, but there's a stop sign and a thirty-five mile an hour sign right in their yard. I think the pole is still attached to the stop sign. Now, I brought this up to a deputy a while back, and I thought, well, maybe something will be done, you know, the sheriff's department. Now, to me, those are federal signs. If you park in front of a handicap sign, it's two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fine, isn't it? I believe if you throw trash out, it's a five-hundred-dollar fine, but if you go steal a federal sign, I don't know many being done. There's, there's nothing being done about it, and then the people can say they bought at a yard sale. Well, if they didn't steal it, they bought stolen property. They know they should not have that there, and who knows what they've got in their backyard? They could have street signs, more stop signs, more speed limit signs, and then, so I propose that the sheriff's department, if, when they're driving by, if they see a street sign or a stop sign or anything in people's yard, they get a minimum of a five-hundred-dollar fine per sign, and make it known to the county to stop the stealing of the signs and stop signs, street signs, because we need them out here in West Putnam. We don't have any stop signs hardly. A deputy the other day was out there, and he, and I stopped by, and he asked me how to get back, he had no idea where he was at. The streets, the street that we were on, there was no stop sign, no street signs, the next street didn't have any. I told him how to get back to the blacktop, and I would like to, I'll bring that, another subject, but he was following somebody, and this probable cause law that this state here has is where your drug problem is from. If a deputy is a ninety percent, a hundred percent sure that the car he's following's got drugs in it, and because of kind of probable cause, he can't stop them, and that's crap, especially when he knows it. I mean, so, they go ahead and peddle the drugs, you know, but anyway, those street, those street signs and stop signs, they're right there, and they should be fined for stealing government property.
Thank you, Mr. Steele.
Bye.
Next speaker, Crockett Watson?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
My name's Crockett Watson, I live at 141 Kitty Avenue, Interlaken, proud to live there. I know it used to be called Mess City, but since the sheriff has, lives out there now, I, I think a lot of things have improved, drugs are a lot less than they used to be, it seems to me. That's not why I'm here. I really am here because I live on a dirt road, I want to know how you get on the list, from dirt to pavement list, I understand there is a list, I've talked to you several times.
Yeah.
And the biggest thing is that my road is either completely sand, where you can't do anything, or it's, it's clay, when it rains, it's, you got to have a four-wheel drive. Right now, it's like a washboard, I don't go down the road, I go to a side road. It's used all the time. We, we live on Jewel Lake, and if any of y'all were born here, you probably swam in that lake, I've, I've ever talked to of any, any consequence that worked on my house or anything. Oh, I, as a boy, I lived here, I swam here, we, we catch bass there and all, we have a public access right next to my house, which is fine, I love it there. People come, and you guys have put up a fence, and so you can't launch a boat there anymore unless you pull it in, which is great, and so, anyway, these people come in here constantly down this road, which makes it worse. It's the only access to this lake, only public access. I know you live on a lake, and you could come to my lake, I'm going to call it my lake, through a canal, and, but?
I think it was my lake before your lake, but that's okay.
Whatever. I don't, I don't know, I don't know.
I'm teasing, you can right ahead, sir.
My wife and I are from Jacksonville, I'm a Vietnam veteran, I retired from Sears, I also am an insurance agent, retired from Farm Bureau Insurance, so we, we had a lake place down here, and after I retired, I decided to move down here, we love Putnam County, but the, this road needs some attention, either aggregate, I understand there is such a thing, that you can put on there, it turns real hard. I've, I've looked over there where you just had all your roads paved around your house, and there's a couple of them there that has one house on it, and?
That's not right, but that's okay.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
It, it has one house on it, looks like it about to fall down, and there's two of them that are dead-end roads. This is a public access road to, that everybody uses, we have several people that need occasionally, unfortunately, public service to come down, because they're, you know, they have, they're disabled, and the road needs to be in good shape. The last thing I'll say is that among myself, I'm, I'm a big group of motorcycle, and you cannot ride a motorcycle down this road ninety-nine percent of the time. There's about three days of the, of the year that is perfect, you know what I'm saying? And those are the times that somebody's come out and checked the road.
Well, today's a good day because we got rain last night.
Uh, my motorcycle?
Thank you, Mr. Crockett, for coming today, we appreciate it.
I'm done?
Yes, sir, your time's up on?
Time's up, okay.
Thank you, though, but we are looking at it, okay? Mr. Perkins, Lawrence Perkins, you're next.
Thanks, sir, I'm Lawrence Perkins, I'm calling, I have a property at 153 Powerland Road, and last month, we addressed some issues about, from my personal experience, but the thing that we did not talk about was the request and gave, and the information I gave to the county administrator specifically regarding process, and again, I graduated from Georgia Tech and have been a licensed professional engineer continuously for, since the, since the eighties, and have designed, built distribution centers and manufacturing facilities, I've, I've been a CTO and CIO for companies that serve the defense industry as well as manufacturing services. Also, was a co-founder of a software company that we founded back in 2000 that did very well, and, and finally divested of in, in 2017. I am very familiar with process, I made some recommendations regarding process, I look forward to the process of installing or connecting the water? That's been repaired, his, also, their irrigation was cut, that has not been dealt with, and also, there's a flooding of a, of a water heater room that, at another location. What we've asked for, and submitted to the county administrator some, some things, and I look forward to hearing from the county, I've not heard anything since last, the last meeting from anyone, from the county, however, but the process of not contacting the owner of the property before something's done is, is bad for them, it's just, just not right. The ability to talk to the plumbing contractor, and the plumbing contractor not contacting the owner, at least making the best effort to do that, is not acceptable, and that should be corrected. The onsite issues, it takes roughly thirty seconds to use this to check the pressure that the existing system supply line from the well. Takes about thirty seconds to check that, that pressure, and at least warn the homeowner or the occupant of a disparity between the service that you're about to connect and what was there. There ought to be?
Mr. Perkins, time is up, sir. Thank you for coming.
I want some?
I'll be back next time.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Turner?
Mr. Perkins, you're welcome to come back all you want to, now, we've talked about this multiple times, and what you're stating this morning damn sure ain't correct. You're in here giving them a hard time, and I know for an absolute fact, and I proved it to you, proved it to you, that they sent three notices hand-delivered to your rental house, because your renter didn't let you know you're upset. If, number one, you got this for free, we hooked you up for free, we didn't, it didn't cost you any money, for two years, you've been wanting to hook up, we hooked you up for free, we let you be the first, among the first ten people that got hooked up for free, and you're upset because he hooked in, in a different spot, and your toilet leaked because your pressure was too high.
I'm saying I can afford the cost, the incremental cost, but there's a lot of people that cannot, and that if their process isn't improved, and that's what I'm talking about, is the process.
But they did, the process, Mr. Perkins, the process that, I've talked to you before about this, the process didn't break down completely, not completely, on our side, because three notices were hand-placed on the door of your rental house. Your renter didn't let you know.
There's a single mother that commutes to Gainesville.
That's funny.
And that's, you know, I'm not worried about my property now, what I'm trying to do is get an acknowledgement that somebody's looking at the process, that somebody follows back up with them.
They're constantly looking at it, that gentleman right there is.
Yes, sir.
And I am so appreciative of them, I'm appreciative of, of Marie.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins, thank you. All right.
I'll look forward to talking to you again.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I make, just a thing, we have done some follow-up, is we've made a new door hanger, that after the contract is awarded to whichever particular plumber or agency that wins the next award, they're absolutely going to get another door hanger with the person's name who got the contract on there that follows the door hanger that we put out that says that they've been selected and that, that it's in process.
It was on the last one.
Yes, sir, so there, I mean, we have put in where it is, could be contacted.
One of the three that was, that's been being hung even up till now.
Correct.
Had that name, had the name and the phone number of the plumber, I think on two of the three door hangers, but I know for a fact that one of them had it. The breakdown here truly, the breakdown here was, is that the renter didn't let the owner know that these placards had been put on the door, and so when they came to hook up, and, and I understand, I really do understand his frustration, because if he'd have been there, he could have got them to hook the line up here instead of over there, and he could have, you know, been there when the, when the toilet malfunctioned because of the better pressure, he could have been there. I understand, and his frustration, I understand, but taking it out on, on these guys, I don't know is totally fair, I just really don't. I know that, that? Total communication wasn't a breakdown in, in us.
And the only one, one thing that we did do, that we did realize after the first tenant, that's why we did a small group to start with, to make sure we did, if there was something we missed, what did happen, is we're actually now giving the homeowner's phone number to the contractor that's doing the hookup, so that if there is any question, the contractor wants to reach out to the homeowner, their, their phone number's given to the contractor at that point, we did not do that on the first go-round.
Things we learn as we go, but we're doing better. All right, clerk of the court, Mr. Matt Reynolds?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank y'all for giving me a couple moments to do employment recognitions earlier, and if you would, I'd just like to recognize, we had interns from our internship program here earlier today, and just wanted to, to point that out, we worked with the school district, Dr. Huff and the CTE program, and they handled applications and went through them and whatnot, so I'm just proud of the kids, and, you know, for anybody who says, you know, the generation is coming up, they're always stuck on their phone, you know, no work ethic, I, I challenged them to, to come down and, and take a look at this group of kids that we have down there working with us, they are truly, truly amazing, so, thank y'all.
Sir, I, I had it written down, the visitors in the audience, maybe next time we'll call them up earlier, I didn't mean for this to go as late as it did.
That's, that's okay, I, I wanted them here to be able to, to see government in action, that's part of the reason why we've, we've put that internship in place.
So, you showed us, I'm just teasing.
And thank you to my staff for all the support that they've given them, too, thank y'all.
Thank you, sir, thank you. County attorney, Mr. Rich Commando.
Nothing today, thank you, sir.
County administrator, Mr. Terry Sugg.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman, nothing really for the commission, but I would like to say publicly, Matt, through you, if you would please, to Ryan, how much we appreciate Ryan for all she does, on your side of the ledger for us, and I know, you know, I didn't get a chance to tell her today, but there's been multiple times when I've reached out to her, or she's reached out to me, she's been either working on the weekend or remotely or whatever, and I, I wanted that to not go on Mitch, and because she has really done a great job, and we appreciate all that she's done, as well as all your other staff, but particularly today for Ms. Ryan.
Thank, thank you, sir, I'll, I'll make sure she knows.
Absolutely.
Thank you. All right, commissioner comments, Commissioner Pickens?
Yeah, Chairman Harvey, good meeting, and just really want to recognize, hope everybody had a safe and happy, enjoyable Fourth of July and, and weekend, and just want to commend Chairman Harvey, he has really been the organizer, with some help of the Fortified Life Celebration in Interlaken for, what, the past forty years?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine years, so, and did a great job again to?
Think you need to make it an even forty.
No.
This past fourth, so, anyway, I want to commend in, in South Putnam, the Red, White and Boom event that the Crescent City Yacht Club puts on, and then also in conjunction with the Downtown Association, it was a really good event, well-attended, have a number of food booths, trucks, and, and booths and stuff like that, and fireworks at dark, so just want to commend them, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Mr. Adamsack?
Yeah, just best wishes to Commissioner Wilkinson, hopefully she gets better soon. I had no water this morning, so I left the house running late, so I do have water now, but that's why I don't have my suit jacket on, so, because I forgot everything, so I literally brushed my hair with pool water, so, if that helps anyone understand, but water's back on, and I appreciate everyone that helped out with that, and just praying for everyone in the community that's sick, there's several people that several of us know that have fallen ill or had things happen that just want to lift them up, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Yes, a couple things. I hope that the conversation that we had about animal services today doesn't end here. I really hope so, because the problem we're having with animal services is not going to get better, it's going to get worse progressively, and building a new building isn't going to matter a bit unless we change how we operate within that building. So, I hope that we can go ahead, and I know that Commissioner Pickens made a comment that he may want that to go to Animal Services Committee or whatever, that's fine, I, I just think if we're going to do it, we need to do it. I'd like for this to take place no later than in the month of September, at the very latest, so I know that I don't want to step on Commissioner Pickens's toes or whatever with animal services or whatever he wants it to do, but we've got to make some tough decisions here, and I don't know that Animal Services Committee is going to be able to help us out with that or not, I just don't know, so please make that? So, please make that decision. I can talk to you about it after if you'd like or whatever, but this thing needs to happen now, sooner rather than later, or we're not going to make any difference. With, that new animal services building is supposed to open in September? Something, something like that. Well, whenever it does, we need to have the policies in place to let them have at least a shot at success, because right now they have no shot at success. Um, the other thing I meant to ask you yesterday, and so I apologize, do you have your year-end numbers now that we can do a mid-year true-up? Do you, did you get them by June 30th?
No, sir, I have draft financials, they're still working through finalizing those numbers, um, so we're, we're not there. Uh, Ryan told me today, he was going to go over a couple of things, I've, I have some questions on, so we're working through-
Yes, the financial, the final financial statements will be done by July 26th, Friday, but the draft numbers were sent, I sent them last weekend, I think, on Saturday.
So you have draft numbers, just not finals?
Addressed and then, uh, like Ryan-
Man, I, I won't be here next year, and so you do as you please, but buddy, that's bad business. What just took place is just bad business, and I, I know you've had some issues, I truly do, and so I'm not going to try to get too critical about it or whatever, but man, this has just almost crippled us this year. We don't even know where we can start budgeting from accurately or whatever, and so, you know, we started talking about this several months ago, and it still hasn't been fixed over the years, and then, then it seems like the auditor who's working on this has had time to make requests and do work on, on the operational audit that you've requested. Well, operational audit is just a request. It's not statute driven. Our side is statute driven. I mean, I don't mind, you want to do operations, I have no problem.
I want to, I want to correct you.
Fix the good, fix the required part first.
Well, uh, the, the operational audit, I'm not sure what operational audit you're referring to, because I don't have the external auditors working on an operational audit, they've only been working on the financial statement audit.
They're working on something because they've been asking for, uh, record requests from procurement.
That's financial statement audit, yes, sir. Uh-huh. That's part of what they have to do in order to, in their management letter, in order to present an un, it's called an unqualified opinion, which is a clean opinion. They have to check your processes and procedures to be able to do that.
I would just hope that next year we can figure out a way to get this to where the new commission doesn't run into these issues.
Sure.
Those three of them's going to be new up here, and it's going to be very difficult for them to do this, even having the information. It would have been a tragedy this year if all of us had been new.
Yes, sir.
Instead of being able to have some kind of a, you know, of experience of what was going on.
I understand. Let me, let me back up and explain a little bit about that and how we got here. My staff had been emailing about procurement of the audit for almost a year as to when we were going to select the new audit firm. Audit firms typically do their interim fieldwork in July or August of the fiscal year. We didn't start interim fieldwork, interim fieldwork until December, when the contract was executed. So, that put us about four months behind the eight ball, which puts, moves us from March to July, which are the dates we're looking at now. I've already had extensive conversations with the external auditors about, we will have trial balance numbers at the end of this year, by December 31st, they will have them, and their deadline to have the finals back to us is March 31st. So, we've had, and, and we're having weekly meetings on this, and I've expressed to them concerns, and, and when they come and, and present the external audit in front of you, which they will, and I think we're planning for August 13th on that, please e- e- express that to them again, the importance of, uh, uh, meeting the deadlines and whatnot, because it, yes, there are some aspects of my office, but there are aspects of the external office.
They're not going to meet your deadlines, you need to run, run them off and find somebody else. I mean, that's all there is to it.
Yes, sir.
And I know that you've had issues, and I'm not trying to be critical, because I know you've had those issues. I know you've had some employee issues, turnover and some what have you, but it, it's, it's put us in a bad spot this year.
Trust me, I, I fully understand, like I said before, I have prepared, I've prepared budgets since 2008 for the city of Palaka, and I know how important it is to have those numbers, and I actually started instituting, pulling in the live numbers from the financial statements when I got here, because the county didn't do that when I got here in 2017, so we started doing that. So, try, I, 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 I am 110% on board with you, sir, and I'm frustrated with the process just as much as you are. So, and again, I, I apologize, but I have tried to set the stage for next year so that we, all of us, we're all on the same page that we're trying to meet, uh, proper deadlines.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And, um, I do also wish Commissioner Wilkinson well, and her family better, back on the road to good health. And I do need to make a statement, though, that it's, I'm not retiring from anything other than to control the July 4th celebration. Everybody thinks I'm retiring from everything. Thirty-nine years of doing a celebration when it's 100 degrees outside and I'm not getting any younger, um, it's difficult. So, and I find myself saying, we used to do that, and we used to do this, and we used, and maybe it's time that a young person comes in and says, maybe we should do this. But, uh, 39 years is a long time. I tell the story how I got involved was, my first year, there was a gentleman that was setting up the parade at Interlaken High School. He was 80 years old, his name was Red, and he looked like he was fixing a pass out that day. And I went out there and said, well, what can I do to help you? Between that July 4th and the next July 4th, he passed away. And they go, well, didn't you help him? Well, now you're the guy. And I want someone else to be there to bring it up and, and make it better. I think we all want to leave the world better than what we found it, and truly, that's what I've done. So, I'm only retiring from July 4th. The Christmas celebration is the first Saturday in December, already started planning on it, so be a part of that. And if there's no other further business, this meeting is adjourned.